Quiet, please. Shh, thank you. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid Hearing on the Committee on Economic Development. Please silent all electronic devices. If you have any questions, please raise your hand and one of us at the side will kindly assist you. No time, please do not approach the dais. Thank you very much for your kind cooperation. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good morning, folks. I really quickly wanted to start off today reading a quote from my committee's predecessor, former council member Paul Vallone from post my last helicopter hearing that reads, "Love watching you and your hearings, so very proud, keep kicking butt." He used a different word, but butt. "Love, Paul," which I thought was great because here we are again bringing it back to a topic that was really important to him during this hearing while chairing this committee. So, good morning and welcome to today's hearing on the New York City Council's Committee on Economic Development. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias and I've had the privilege of chairing this committee. I want to thank my colleagues on the committee for being here today as well as the representatives from EDC, DEP, advocates and members of the public who have joined us. I'd like to note that we've been joined by council members Bacher and Marte. Today's hearing will examine the important issue of helicopter noise and safety in New York City. Over the past five years, 311 has seen a staggering 2,329% increase in helicopter noise complaints. Exposure to the excessive noise produced by helicopter flights has been associated with serious health effects like high blood pressure, cognitive impairment, and diminished reading comprehension in children. It is simply unacceptable for our communities to suffer these consequences for the brief enjoyment of wealthy tourists who want to ride in helicopters, especially considering that city receives relatively little revenue from these flights. In addition to the noise issue, we have unfortunately seen several tragic helicopter accidents over the years that have raised major safety concerns. These include the deadly 2018 crash in the East River that killed five passengers and a 2019 crash on the roof of a Manhattan building that killed the pilot. In 2016, the city and the helicopter tourism industry reached an agreement to cut the number of sightseeing flights leaving from the downtown Manhattan heliport in half, resulting in about 30,000 fewer flights per year. While this was an important step forward, the surge in noise complaints shows that it simply wasn't enough. More needs to be done to protect the health and safety of New Yorkers. That's why we are considering a series of package of legislations today to address this problem from multiple angles. First, we have Intro 26, which I sponsor, that would restrict nonessential helicopter operations at city-owned heliports to electric-powered aircraft only. Electric helicopters technology has come a long way in recent years with successful demonstrations showing they are much quieter than traditional combustion engine helicopters. This bill has received strong support from key advocates who agree it would make a real difference in cutting helicopter noise and pollution. By leveraging the city's control over its heliports, we can accelerate the transition to cleaner and quieter helicopter technology. We have also Intro 70, sponsored by council member Wrestler, which would go a step further and prohibit all nonessential helicopters from operating at city-owned heliports. Next, Intro 27, which I also sponsored, would require DEP to install sound meters to monitor helicopter noise in impacted areas and provide monthly public reports. This data is crucial for effectively regulating the industry. Finally, we have three resolutions before the committee. Resolution 85, sponsored by council member Gennaro, calls on the state to establish a noise tax on nonessential helicopter flights. Resolution 226, sponsored by council member Brewer, calls on the state to ban nonessential use of the West 30th Street heliport. And Resolution 233, also sponsored by council member Brewer, calls on the FAA to ban all nonessential helicopter flights over New York City. While the FAA has jurisdiction over flight paths and much of the airspace, the city can and must use the tools at its disposal to protect our residents. I look forward to hearing from the NYC, EDC, and DEP about their efforts and plans to address helicopter noise and safety. I also want to hear feedback from advocates and the public on this package of bills. Before we begin, I'd like to remind folks present today to please maintain decorum throughout the hearing. If you are here to testify, you will have three minutes to speak when your name is called. Please keep responses concise. You don't have to use all of that time so that everyone has a chance to be heard. If you are unable to finish, please submit your complete written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov. And just another quick note, if you agree with something in this room, you are to remain -- the public is to remain silent, please use the support gesture that I just displayed. Finally, I'd like to thank the economic development team here at the council, Senior Counsel Alex Polidoff, Senior Policy Analyst William Hongach, and Finance Analyst Glenn Martelloni for all their hard work preparing for this hearing. I will now turn it over to our committee counsel to administer the oath. I'd like to call up Mikhail Adgate from EDC, Jennifer Sun from New York City Economic Development Corporation, Anton Fredrikson from NYC, EDC, Carleen McLoughlin from DEP, and Mark -- Mark Pagan, Pagan? Page? Mark Page from DEP as well. Before swearing in, I'm going to allow Councilmember Wrestler a moment to speak to give an opening statement regarding his bill.
Thank you so much, Madam Majority Leader and Chair. I really want to just thank you for your leadership on this issue, for holding this hearing today. When I first introduced a bill about helicopters early in our first term, you were our first co-prime sponsor and have been just a relentless champion, and we're really fortunate to have you in this role and leading in this really powerful way. I will tell you, walking around the streets of the 33rd Council District, just on the other side of the bridge in Brooklyn, I hear from neighbors more about how angry and frustrated they are about helicopter noise than almost any other issue. And people are just at their wits' end. It's like when they go out to Brooklyn Bridge Park, they can't have a conversation with the person walking next to them because the helicopter noise is too loud. They don't want to be on the roof, they don't want to be in their backyard, they don't want to even be sitting on their stoop because the intensity of the helicopter noise. And it's city-owned helipads. And we've introduced Intro 70 because we want to end nonessential helicopter travel. We don't want tourist flights hanging out over our neighborhoods just spewing fossil fuels into our community for minutes on end. We don't want wealthy -- the wealthiest of the wealthy getting on helicopter rides to JFK or the Hamptons instead of taking public transit or cars like the rest of us. It doesn't make any sense why our taxpayer dollars are supporting these helipads for a modest industry creating a modest number of jobs at huge negative impacts from a noise pollution and air pollution standpoint. And so, I really do hope that we're going to hear some positive things from EDC today. I hope maybe even some warmth to Intro 70 and other pieces of legislation that my colleagues have introduced because the status quo is totally unacceptable and we have to do better in reining in this industry that is causing havoc and harm in our neighborhoods each and every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Alex Polidoff, Senior Counsel. Will all members of the administration who are testifying today please raise your right hands? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony today and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning, Chair Farias and members of the Economic Development Committee. My name is Jennifer Sun and I serve as the Executive Vice President of Planning for the New York City Economic Development Corporation. I'm joined by my colleagues Mikhail Adgate, Senior Vice President in our Government and Community Relations Department, and Anton Fredrikson, Director of Aviation, as well as Carleen McLoughlin, and Mark Page from the New York City Department of Environmental Protection. We appreciate the opportunity to testify about our work to reimagine our heliports with a focus on sustainability and innovation. As you know, EDC is charged with creating a vibrant, inclusive, and globally competitive economy for all New Yorkers, which includes but is not limited to promoting economic development and stewardship of the city's waterfront assets. As one part of EDC's waterfront management on behalf of the city, we are responsible for the management of both city-owned heliports, the East 34th Street heliport and the downtown Manhattan heliport, which we call DMH. At both heliports, EDC acts as a contract administrator for the concession agreements between the city and the heliport operators. Aligned with our commitment to combat climate change and reduce transportation emissions, we are actively pursuing initiatives to advance cleaner aviation technology and optimize sustainable freight distribution. For our aviation sector, this entails building the infrastructure to support electric alternatives to traditional helicopters. While for freight distribution, it involves transitioning goods from trucks to the city's waterways and sustainable microfreight. There is significant potential at our waterfront assets, particularly the heliports, to creatively address sustainability challenges, enhance efficiency, and promote economic growth. This past November, we announced our vision for a first-of-its-kind hub for sustainable transportation and deliveries at DMH. In connection with this announcement, we piloted demonstration flights of multiple electric vehicle takeoff and landing EV toll aircraft in an urban environment, a world first. As we look to the future of sustainable transportation and infrastructure, we are readying our heliports for EV toll aircraft, which have the benefit of being an efficient, sustainable, and quieter alternative to traditional helicopters. Under this plan, DMH will aim to become the first heliport in the world with the infrastructure to support electric flight while also incorporating last-mile maritime freight distribution and delivering major quality-of-life improvements for New Yorkers. The innovation being introduced at DMH is emblematic of how EDC and the city are activating infrastructure assets to support our current and future transportation needs. Both DMH and the East 34th Street heliports are already critical NYC facilities used by a wide range of entities and for a broad array of purposes, including hospitals for organ transplants, news outlets for reporting, the New York City Police and Fire Departments responding to emergency calls, and other critical city operations, as well as chartered, private, and tour flights. As the largest US city and the US capital for international business, our city-operated heliports are essential to maintaining corporate competitiveness, ensuring life-sustaining and emergency operations, and maintaining our tourism sector. The heliports are also significant drivers of economic activity, providing a total economic impact of 78 million in the city and employing approximately 175 workers. As we envision the future role of our heliports in supporting the city's goals, it remains crucial to uphold their essential economic and logistical functions. Both heliports within EDC's purview, the East 34th Street heliport and DMH, are public-use heliports, a federal aviation administration designation that means a heliport is available for use by the general public without a requirement for prior approval of the owner or operator. Public-use facilities operate as the refueling stations for helicopters traversing throughout the Northeast and tri-state area. As public-use facilities, we cannot turn a helicopter away, including a helicopter that takes off outside New York City and wants to land at one of our heliports, even if there is no prior approval. As you know, primary responsibility for the regulation of US aviation and air transportation, including the establishment of a national aviation noise policy, and ultimate oversight of local airport noise and access restrictions, is vested in the FAA. As a result, the city and EDC have limited ability to regulate traffic, access, and noise in New York City airspace. Where the city does have the ability to influence the industry is through our concession agreements with our operators where we can incentivize the industry to adopt cleaner and quieter technologies and promote diverse uses at the heliport. At both heliports, EDC acts as a contract administrator for the concession agreements between the city and the heliport operators. Day-to-day management of heliport operations is handled by Atlantic Aviation at East 34th Street and Sacred Aviation Services at the DMH. The concession agreement set forth the terms and conditions under which each facility operates, including the hours of operation, maximum annual flight volumes, insurance levels, and reporting requirements, including air quality monitoring and route compliance. The East 34th Street heliport serves a broad range of uses and is a base of operations for emergency services, essential organ transport to nearby hospitals, chartered and private flights, city operations, and media. The downtown Manhattan heliport, by design, is the only heliport that permits tour flights. It also serves chartered and private flights, NYPD, and other emergency services. DMH is also the only heliport in New York City that can accommodate presidential flights by Marine One and its supporting aircraft. While the heliports offer important services for city hospitals, businesses, and emergency personnel, we recognize that community members have quality-of-life concerns regarding helicopter noise, and we are committed to leveraging our position in this space to address these concerns. We have and continue to work collaboratively with the FAA and industry to address noise challenges. As part of this collaboration, we have negotiated flight caps and established overwater tour routes with the FAA that fly at even higher altitudes than typically possible in a highly complex airspace like New York City to mitigate noise. We have also worked in partnership with the council and key stakeholders to improve transparency and address community concerns. We take our asset management responsibility very seriously, and we are committed to working with the council to address noise impacts from helicopter operations and data reporting on helicopter flights. To this end, EDC monitors public complaints related to all helicopter flights over New York City, not just flights to and from the two EDC-managed heliports. Under our process, after a member of the public lodges a complaint through the city's 311 portal, this data is transmitted to EDC and the DMH operator for review. The 311 data undergoes two rounds of analysis, first by our DMH operator and then by an independent third-party consultant with expertise in analyzing flight paths. Once both rounds of analysis are complete, EDC compiles monthly reports that are transmitted to the city council, elected officials, and relevant community boards. We are committed to responding individually to each complaint received and welcome the opportunity to work with council on how best to present the data in our monthly reports. More recently, we have furthered our commitment to addressing quality-of-life concerns beyond just noise complaints through requirements and recommendations laid out in our ongoing procurement for a new DMH operating contract. The updated Request for Proposals, or RFP, we released in November 2023 explicitly seeks proposals for an operator to advance a transition to EV toll aircraft and operations, diversify revenue streams, and reduce helicopter tour operating hours. Moreover, a key requirement of the RFP is to create and operate a micro-distribution center as part of the city's marine highway network that decreases the city's reliance on trucks. More specifically, the RFP requires upgrades to the DMH heliport to make it ready for EV toll aircraft as soon as they are authorized for use by the FAA and incentivize EV toll use when feasible. Reduction of tour hours by 30%, with the new tour hours changing to 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, as well as cutting Saturday operational hours. The construction and operation of a micro-distribution facility. An operating plan and schedule for DMH to facilitate inbound freight deliveries by water. This will integrate DMH into the city's wider marine highway network, which will help push deliveries onto the waterways and reduce diesel truck trips, getting polluting and traffic-causing trucks off the roads and greening the city. Improved data collection and reporting on all flight activity in addition to 311 complaints. Plans to further reduce takeoffs and landings of non-EV toll tour and corporate and/or personal chartered flights. Introduction of greenhouse gas emissions reporting. MWBE participation goal of 30% for site development and construction work. And standing up a workforce training program that improves access to available career pathways in aviation, maritime, transportation, logistics, and other relevant sectors. We are currently evaluating the DMH RFP submissions and hope to select an operator for the downtown Manhattan heliport by this fall. We are very excited for the changes to come to DMH. By incorporating significant steps to improve operations at the heliport, lessen activities related to noise complaints, and continuing to improve low- and zero-emission, energy-efficient transportation beyond helicopters, we hope to support sustainable aviation and transportation operations citywide. We are currently reviewing all the bills that are being heard today with our colleagues at the Law Department and look forward to continuing to work with the council, including updating you on the DMH RFP and continuing to refine and improve our helicopter data reporting. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I'd like to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Vernikov. So, I appreciate the thorough testimony on giving us a full update. I less appreciate not having responses for each of the bills that are listed. Can we get a timeline of when we're going to hear from the admin or from the agencies on your Law Department's decision on the bills?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember. We know that the Law Department is reviewing each of the bills together and has scheduled regular -- as part of their regular check-ins with Council Legal that these bills are being discussed as part of that.
Okay, so, when should I expect? I mean, this is usually you folks come with testimony with some sort of response.
Yeah.
About surrounded, support, not support.
I definitely understand the question. Based on our conversations with the Law Department, given the complexity of the aviation sector and the jurisdictional boundaries between the FAA and other federal regulators and actors, and the fact that the city's authority may be subject to different limitations, the Law Department has been using this time to review more thoroughly. And so, while I can't speak on their behalf in terms of a timeline, I do know that it is something that they are working on.
Okay. I'm going to take it as you all are wholeheartedly supportive of every intro and reso then. Okay. Going to jump right into some of the committee questions here. Can you provide an update on the city's efforts to address helicopter noise concerns since the 2016 agreement that reduced tourist flights? Any successes and challenges?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. As I highlighted in my testimony, we have renewed our focus on areas within the concession agreement where we might have an ability to further address quality-of-life complaints. And so, in this most recent procurement of the DMH and seeking a new operator, we did require that the respondent submit a plan from their perspective of how they can work with EDC and the city council in further incentivizing helicopter operators to operate in a way that has less emissions and less noise. So, for example, in addition to the 50% reduction of annual flights at DMH from 60,000 flights to 30,000 flights, we have required in this new procurement a further reduction of operating hours by 30%. And we're looking forward to a private response to how they might further incentivize and diversify the uses of the heliport so that there is an ongoing reduction of helicopter tour flights from DMH over time.
And anything within the RFP or what we're expecting to see from their plans regarding, like transparency on their tail numbers or anything like that that goes through our know? I'm sure you folks see the complaints from constituency or some of the websites that are utilized to track who's actually going or not following the rules, per se, and going over residential properties. So, is there any specifications that sit there on what you expect to see from their plans?
So, I'll ask Anton to answer the question more directly about the data that we're seeing around all helicopter flights in New York City. What I'll share at a very high level is that by looking at data for an approximately one-year period from, let's say, spring of 2023 to the current period, what we're finding is that overall about 4% of the complaints are coming from the city-owned heliports, meaning that 96% of the complaints are attributed to flights originating from other heliports outside of those that are city-operated. But I'll ask Anton to elaborate.
Sure.
Thank you. And of that, 1% of all flights are tours from the heliport, to back up Jennifer's claim. Separately, I wanted to address on the flight activity side, this is a new requirement that we're putting into our RFP. So, before, we've looked at complaints, but that's a subset of all flight activity happening. So, as part of the new RFP, the operator would be expected to develop a tool that'll analyze all flight activity over New York City. So, we have a better, more complete picture of all the activity and can make more informed decisions from that.
And is that going to be a public tool or is that going to be internal between the operator itself and EDC?
Yes, that information is using publicly available information through ADS-B data, and we can work with our operator to see if we can make it more publicly accessible or more easily digestible, that data that's available already publicly.
And have you seen any efforts made that have brought in specific changes that have been particularly effective in, like, reducing noise or answering for some of the data that we've already aggregated over the years with complaints?
I think looking--
Have any of the operators?
Yeah, we have a consultant today at the downtown Manhattan heliport that looks at all complaints, and already we're rolling out and developing new tools to improve the tracking. So, looking, you know, potentially even geo-fencing areas of the city to get a complete picture of all activity and not just looking at complaints as they come through and categorizing those individual complaints.
And are there going to be any penalties or anything associated with them necessarily? Like, let's say, they come up with a plan, we have this transparent public tool that everyone can see, which we kind of already have different data sets and tools that people can see that folks are in violation. What then does the EDC have as a penalty or a repercussion tool to then say this operator's being a bad actor and not living up to the agreement?
Yes, so we do have a system in place today where there are penalties if there is a repeated offense from that particular operator. Now, this is all -- we have to keep into account that there are, you know, occasionally reasons for a flight to veer off course for weather or safety-related things, so we take that into account as well, and we will be always looking to strengthen that in the new operating agreement as well.
How many penalties have you folks issued over the last year?
We can get that information from--
I would love that information. And I just want to note, too, I think generally the public always understands when, like, let's say, bad weather, folks have to gear off. But I think the problem that we've seen, I mean, over a decade, even though I've only been here year three, is that that information is not transparent and it's not actually publicly made for use. And I don't think anyone would ever want anyone to put themselves in a dangerous condition just because they're in a helicopter. But if folks understand that connection, which I hope is what you're aiming to gear towards, more public transparency of why people might be off course if they are, if there is a reason, to help validate people's lived experiences of the issues that they're seeing every day. How does the administration balance the economic interest of the helicopter industry with the health and quality of life concerns raised by impacted communities?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. I think demonstrated by, you know, our approach through the new procurement of balancing the revenue that we're collecting from the operator who manages the heliport day-to-day with the quality-of-life concerns is really in the reduction of operating hours. So, in addition to the reduction by 50% in 2016, we're going further again in this new procurement of reducing those operators by 30%. In addition to that, we're requiring a private investment in charging infrastructure to really reduce barriers for supporting the industry in adopting EV toll technology as soon as it becomes available and is certified by the FAA.
And what steps does the city take to ensure that community voices are heard and considered in decisions related to helicopter regulation?
So, the 311 complaints is certainly a primary source, you know, for understanding where residents in New York City are experiencing that noise in their neighborhoods. And we do, you know, frequent engagement through community boards and elected officials, and certainly that's a channel in which we're hearing about quality-of-life concerns as well.
I would just add to that, Councilmember. I think the items that we identified in the RFP in terms of changes that we're making for this new procurement, I would say are-- I would say are, you know, almost a direct result of the conversations that we've had with you, other committee members, community boards, not just, you know, reducing the tour hours by 30%, but looking at improving data collection, improving transparency, how those records are distributed. So we do take all of the feedback that we've gotten very seriously and have baked that into the RFP.
Yeah, that's, I see that in some of these bullets, so that's appreciated. Are there any examples of compromises beyond the 2016 agreement that have been reached through collaboration with the industry and community stakeholders?
I can't share our negotiations with the respondents to the RFP, but I look forward to being able to share that as soon as we can, once we're further along in our process.
And how does the city navigate the balance between the federal and local authority when it comes to managing helicopter traffic?
We achieve that balance through a strong partnership and an ongoing conversation with the FAA and with the helicopter industry, recognizing that, I think, where EDC can have influence in policy is really through those partnerships and through negotiated agreements to try to achieve the right balance between, you know, maintaining an economically viable heliport, but also being responsive to community concerns.
And can you discuss the city's work in relationship with the Federal Aviation Administration?
Yeah, I'll share at a very high level, and then Anton can elaborate, that we have, again, very active, ongoing conversations with the FAA to understand the latest in terms of regulations at the federal level with respect to noise and safety. And also, you know, continuing to talk about where together we can be responsive to the council and community concerns in going further than what we've done already.
Thank you, Councilmember. So in addition to our constant engagement with the Federal Aviation Administration, we're also proud to participate in a series of symposia that the FAA has convened with the helicopter industry. So this is a regional challenge I think I can all appreciate. So it's gonna take collaboration with stakeholders outside of New York City as well. And we're proud to be part of those discussions.
Got it, thank you. And in the administration's view, what's the most effective and appropriate combination of local, state, federal actions to address the impacts of helicopter traffic on New York City communities?
Thanks for the question, Councilmember. I think you just touched upon it. It is about a partnership at all levels of government, both within New York City, but also engaging, you know, elected officials and constituents in New Jersey as well. And then I think that's where the federal elected officials, as well as FAA, has an important role, is recognizing that a lot of this helicopter tour traffic doesn't only originate in New York City, but also in New Jersey and elsewhere. And therefore, the opportunity for addressing these concerns more comprehensively really resides in a regional and national approach.
Okay. I'd just like to talk a little bit about 3-1-1 complaints. Can we get how many 3-1-1 complaints about helicopters EDC received last year? 2023, 2022, 2021?
Yes, let's see. Do you?
Yeah.
Yes, we received approximately 50,000 noise complaints last year.
And do we have 2022?
I can pull it up. I think it was about 25 off the top of my head.
Oof, okay. Can we, sorry, after this, like offline, can we get maybe the last three to four years of just top line totals? So we can see how that's increased? If we went like nearly double in a year? That's something for us to consider and look at. Do we know how many 3-1-1 complaints came from DMH or 34th Street were found to be justified?
We did, less than 1% were tour flights originating from the Downtown Manhattan heliport.
But I mean justified in that the percentage were actually in violation to their 3-1-1 complaint versus dismissed for lack of jurisdiction or anything else? Do we know that percentage?
We can get back to you with that exact number.
Who's actually responsible for investigating the 3-1-1 complaints about New York City-based helicopters?
Yes, thank you for the question. We, three layers. Economic Development Corporation first receives the 3-1-1 data and parse through it. Then we pass that on to our private heliport operator at the Downtown Manhattan heliport, who's responsible for all 3-1-1 complaints. They do a thorough investigation of every individual complaint and then categorizes that based on, you know, what type of aircraft it was. Even if there isn't enough information, they will go in and triangulate which flight that was to the best of their ability. And then we have a third layer through an independent third-party consultant that will then double-check to make sure each of those complaints was categorized accurately. Then that's reported back to OTI and updated to close the loop back with the original complaint.
And the third-party consultant, is that through EDC's contract? Like a separate contract to EDC? Or is that to the operator's contract?
Yes, it's a third-party consultant through EDC.
Okay. Sorry. I'd like to talk a little bit more about that, only because I do understand that, I guess I wanna better understand what at our point at EDC, I mean, clearly, we don't have, or maybe you can explain, we need the third-party consultants to verify because of technology, systems, capacity. Like, you know, I would say we want as much of a independent or municipal control over validating complaints and violations. And obviously, we have the expectation that all of our operators are being honest and just in evaluating their own complaints that come through. But it's kind of like, you know, I'm not gonna tell them myself kind of thing, right? So like, we wanna make sure the third-party, I'm trying to better understand why EDC has a consultant? And is it because we don't necessarily have that capacity or the technology necessary to validate and verify?
Not yet, so that's what we're hoping to achieve with this operating agreement, to have and develop that tool so that we can be more informed. That's why we've started with the consultant for that third-party check. And as much as we appreciate the efforts of our operator, you know, sometimes complaints slip through and we wanna be able to catch every single one and make sure it's categorized correctly.
Yeah, totally, that's what I was trying to get at. So that's where the tool is coming in, in this new operation, got it. All right. And then, do we know why there are 30,000 helicopter tourist flights from DMH not showing up with their tail numbers on the flight tracking app that's utilized?
I'm not aware of flight tail numbers being hidden from the tour operators. If there are instances of that, we will look into it.
There are a ton of instances. I'll start sending you my tweets every morning that I get from the folks.
Even if the tail number isn't there, I'll say we can still identify, you know, which operator it is based on the type of aircraft, where it is at that position, we can still identify. So it's not like these complaints are not being accounted for?
Yeah, I mean, I think that is the case. I think a lot of folks feel like their 3-1-1 complaint is actually not being accounted for because there's an inability for them to properly report. If the tail numbers are not being identified or being able to be shown, we don't necessarily have, we as the public, me speaking on behalf of the public, don't necessarily have the tools that you might have to do the tracking down of who that operator is and whether or not they're in violation in the moment that it is happening.
I wish we had different tools or more improved tools. You know, I'm working with FlightRadar24 on my iPhone like anyone else.
And then just quickly on the response rate to constituent 3-1-1 complaints, right? There are a lot of folks that issue complaints into 3-1-1 system and they rarely get any response back that I think maybe feels validated or not. And I think in direct connection ends up getting super frustrated and then eventually give up on making a lot of those complaints. So I think a lot of folks in the public feel the numbers are skewed because there are a ton of people that are just begrudgingly tolerating what's happening around them. Is EDC fully aware of that and that's occurring? And is that being taken into consideration while developing this new tool?
Absolutely. And I'll say, even if the respondent hasn't heard back on the complaint, that complaint is still being counted for and is part of the 50,000-plus that we have reported on. You know, I personally filed my own 3-1-1 complaints, still waiting to hear back on the one from last week. So, you know, we recognize that there is a backlog and we're trying to work through that. I will also point out that a large uptick of these complaints are coming from the same users. So 90% are coming from the top 20 complainants. Now, all complaints are valid, but it is, you know, often generated by the same user many times a day, sometimes with all their neighbors' addresses as well. And we take all of those seriously. I just wanna point out as well that often repeated from the same users.
Yeah, I mean, I totally hear that. And that's understandable to kind of look at that data and see that it could be, you know, skewed in a way coming from certain individual users. But all that to say is, a lot of people just kind of tolerate it and give up. Like, apathy in local government is real and it's something that I think all of us are fighting, both as elected officials and as city agencies, to build more faith and trust with the systems and operations that we have in place for constituents.
Absolutely.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the heliport RFP. The RFP EDC issued for the operation of the Downtown Manhattan heliport asked bidders to submit proposals to address quality of life concerns arising from helicopter operations. What concerns does EDC have regarding quality of life issues?
Yeah, I think, Councilmember, as we mentioned earlier, we really tried to be responsive to the feedback that we heard from yourself and your colleagues and our communities. And so some of the things that you see here, you know, the introduction of greenhouse gas reporting that hadn't been done before. Some of it also to our economic development goals. So, you know, the MWBE participation rate and standing up a workforce training program. Obviously, this connection to micro-distribution and thinking about our city assets more holistically, as Jennifer said, from a sustainable transportation perspective, is a part of the feedback that we have heard as well. And so we really tried to be thoughtful and strategic in thinking about, you know, the DMH in particular, since that is the open one, but our assets more generally, so that we're taking that feedback into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Why isn't the RFP mandate that only the EV tolls, EV tolls be allowed for tourist flights as soon as they are approved for use by the FAA? Instead of us maybe setting a goalpost?
Yeah, we can, I'll hand it over to Anton to talk a little bit about the permitting and sort of jurisdictional process.
Yes, thank you for the question. You know, wonderful, it would be wonderful to see all tours switch to EV toll from day one. We recognize that that won't happen overnight, but that it will be a transition. And we'd like to see a whole industry approach to transitioning to that quieter and cleaner type of technology. Yeah, so we've also required incentive plans from each of the respondents for the RFP to demonstrate to us how they are transactionally incentivizing the rollout, the accelerated rollout of electric vertical takeoff and landing aircraft. And that is part of the evaluation criteria of the RFP. So it's something we take very seriously and are doing everything we can to drive that as quickly as possible.
Okay, and when will the EDC make a selection for the operator at DMH again?
Yeah, so we're in active procurement right now, so it'll be by this fall.
Fall. Okay, I just wanted to, before I get into some, actually, I'll pause after a couple of questions on your testimony and let my colleagues ask questions if they have any. In your testimony, you stated "The heliports are also significant drivers of economic activity, providing a total economic impact of $78 million in the city." Wanna get a better idea of this breakdown of economic impact? I'm assuming this is also including, like, the inclusion of tourism, inclusion of film and TV. I know that is a huge impact. That gets put into this $78 million, I remember very clearly because I was left, like, totally shocked in my oversight hearing last year that we have $1.2 to $2 million in revenue generated from the operators itself. So I kinda wanna get the difference between the $2 million and the $78 million economic impact and if we have a better breakdown of that.
Sure. So, Councilmember, the $2 million in annual revenue comes to EDC, supports our programs and our ability to deliver on EDC's mission programmatically. Whereas the $78 million in estimated economic impact that comes from our economic and research group. The breakdown at a high level is $50 million of direct economic impact resulting from the heliport operators making purchases, like fuel, for example, or other supplies to support their operations. And then $20 million of indirect economic impact from spending of their employees, for example, you know, as workers in the economy.
Got it, thank you. And, I mean, I kind of see where that is here in terms of spending and operations, but do we know how that gets broken down into like city-local investments? And if people see that, like, I think initially, what I've been trying to do with looking at some of these issues is like, where are the measures that we take in? Whether it's from revenue generation or from our city budget? And say, how do we rectify and make investments locally? Whether it's for the noise complaints or for the environmental justice impacts that we see? Do we know there's any direct way that those, that estimation of revenue gets put into communities locally?
I think conceptually, the spending that results from the heliport activity would be realized through city tax levy funds, right? Through tax revenue that then goes through the general fund and then is probably dispersed by OMB at a citywide level, rather than being locally targeted.
Okay, so we need to see more local remediation efforts in our city budget specifically for this, if it goes back into the general fund. Another part of your testimony, I just highlighted and wanted to see if we had a number for these cases you listed here. You stated, "Public use facilities operate as the refueling stations for helicopters traversing throughout the Northeastern tri-state areas." How many folks are actually having to stop for emergency or utilize? Do we know how many stops a day do we have for refueling?
I think we'll have to look through our data to see if we can get to that level of granularity.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any, not link, just a few questions? Okay, I'll pass it over to Councilmember Bautcher for questions.
Thank you, Chair, thank you. What's, help us understand, what's your realistic estimate? Most optimistic, most pessimistic with respect to the approval of electric air taxis, electric helicopters? What's, what can we really expect? One year, two year, three years, four years, five years?
Yes, thank you for the question. We share in that we wanna see the rollout of this technology, this really quiet technology as soon as possible. We, from a technological standpoint, we've seen that these aircraft can fly. I think a number of people here in this room were present at our demonstration flight in November at the Downtown Manhattan heliport. And we heard, or rather, we didn't hear just how effective these aircraft were in addressing quality of life issues. So we're very encouraged by that. Now, in terms of certification, that's up to the FAA. The companies that we are engaged with in the industry, and in our conversations with the FAA, we're anticipating 2025 for that certification. Now, could it be '26 potentially with commercial rollout? You know, we recognize that it may not happen exactly in '25. So that's what we're aiming for, the '25, '26. And we're really hoping for that, you know, having conversations everywhere we can to make sure we stick to that. We also have some competitive dynamics when we look internationally. So I will point out that in Paris for the Olympics, the European equivalent of the FAA, you know, may be approving as soon as this summer. So we will have our eyes there to see if that gets done. And I think that always adds a bit of competitive dynamics. The Chinese have also started with certification actually late last year. We don't know exactly the standards they've been using, so I don't think that's the right comparison. But it's encouraging to see that this is happening, not just here in the US, but around the world and, you know, put some pressure on our regulators as well.
So let's say in January of next year, the FAA announces that we've, we, the FAA, have approved electric air taxis as a safe flying technology in the United States. What then happens here in New York City in the EDC heliports for you to allow that technology? When would that be happening in New York City?
Right away.
So they approve it in January of next year? And we think that we could see electric air taxis in the air late January of next year?
So, we don't know about the January date, first of all. I will say that the nice thing about being in New York, and because of, particularly because of these noise issues, this is the top market for most of these companies. I personally worked at one of these companies prior. And the reason I'm in this role is because New York kept on coming up at the top of this list for the rollout of this technology. And we see in the interest that, you know, a leading European EV toll company, a leading American, you know, moved their aircraft to our heliport to demonstrate that- move their aircraft to our heliport to, to demonstrate that this is a top priority for them. So we're encouraged that, that these companies that have these aircraft and, you know, hopefully the customers of these aircraft as well, depending on the business model, will put New York first on that list. We want, you know, we'd like to be Paris.
And the charging infrastructure, do we have currently in place at the EDC heliports? Do you have the, the charging infrastructure in place that these companies would require?
Thank you for the question. We recognize it's a bit of a chicken and egg problem and that's why we've made a policy decision to put the infrastructure in right away. So what we've done through our procurement is we've made it not a nice to have, but a requirement for that operator to make the necessary infrastructure upgrades to support electric aircraft within 12 months of FAA certification and definitely within that five-year term. So let's play it out, you know, in the very unfortunate event that the FAA doesn't certify within five years, that operator will have already invested that money in that infrastructure that may not even be used. And that's something that we are requiring of our operator.
On the West Side, I represent the Manhattan Cruise Ship Terminal and we're working to electrify, provide shore power for the cruise ships. That is going to be a multi-year process because what we're waiting on is to hear from Con Edison on whether or not a new electrical substation will be needed to accommodate the charging infrastructure. Do you know if, on, at the heliports, if the, if Con Edison has made a determination about the need for a new electrical substation? Or does the current power, would that accommodate the charging infrastructure that you need?
That's a very good point. So internally, we've done an analysis of the existing substation capacity and are confident that there is adequate capacity for a number of charging stations at the heliport. We also are in, you know, conversations with Con Ed across our portfolio to, to make those necessary upgrades and to make sure that the capacity is there. Thirdly, I will say that working with the operator, we will go hand in hand with Con Ed to make sure that, that that capacity is in place. And on timing, I will say as well, you mentioned that it may take some time to, to build this out for something like Manhattan Cruise. Within the 12-month time clock that we've set at, through our procurement, is for that infrastructure to be in place and operational. So if there's an op, so for the operator of the downtown Manhattan heliport, they need to make those investments right away and start planning for that right, right away. They're not waiting until certification because they know this is an expectation and that has to be in place as soon as certification hits.
Thank you.
I have, would like, now like to recognize Councilmember Vernica for her questions.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of questions. I believe you stated earlier there were about 50,000 noise complaints from 311 calls, is that correct?
Yeah.
Can you just specify how many of those are from essential service flights like medical and emergency? If you know?
Yeah, we can get back to you on the exact numbers. I do know from looking at the aircraft owners of these individual complaints that the top two are news gathering, is a news gathering operator and the NYPD. Those are, those are the essential ones.
But you don't know how many right now?
I have it, it's somewhere here.
Okay. Okay, yes, that's good. Do you happen to know what would be the economic loss to specifically the tourism industry if we ban non-essential helicopter flights?
No, council member, we haven't looked at that specific analysis, but that's something that we can work with our team to see if we can respond to that.
So that would be you guys, you guys would be the ones to make that assessment?
We would speak with our economic and research team to see if they have the ability to make that kind of estimate and analysis of economic loss.
Okay, great, thank you, that would be great. And then just one more question. Do you, if you know, do you think that the city council is the appropriate venue to deal with these issues?
Thank you for the question, council member. I, I think it sort of ties back to the Chair's comment about the legislation currently before the committee. The Law Department has been, you know, working closely reviewing this legislation to really understand the jurisdictional boundaries because aviation is such a, a complex structure. And so, you know, we obviously value the, the relationship that we have with the council in terms of addressing quality of life issues, but for the actual, like, legal analysis of all of the, the different bills that are before you today, we'd have to defer to the Law Department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. As Chair of the Committee on Economic Development that oversees the EDC, where all of these heliports are municipally our property, I'd like to say it is under our jurisdiction to have oversight of this. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Brewer who also has questions.
Thank you very much. I've been working on this issue for about 25 years and so I hope we get somewhere. It is a huge challenge for New Yorkers to hear this noise. So my question around the downtown heliport, I mean, is, you have a new, maybe you talked about this. I was teaching at Hunter today, so I had to, I'm late, I'm sorry. You have an RFP out, you have three or four people who are responding. One of them is more of a marine-type response. Is that something that you could take seriously? I know you can't talk about it, it's an RFP, you gotta wait to see what happens. But I'm just saying, could you be, could you consider being more out of the box thinking about that heliport? So it's not including those who are just using it to go out to East Hampton or for tourism? Is that something that is even in your thinking?
Yeah, thank you for the question, council member. You are correct, we can't speak specifically about responses that we have received, but as you saw in the RFP that we put out, we very much clarified and specified that we are looking to integrate DMH into our broader marine highway network. And so that was language that was in the RFP itself. We talked a little bit about our goals from a sustainable transportation perspective. And, and as you saw at the event that we did last fall, we had, you know, a sort of demonstration project.
Terrific.
Because we do think it's, it's critical that we think of all of these assets from a variety of.
Okay, I, maybe I know too much, which is often a problem. But one of the RFP responses is for marine more than aviation. And the other two, I happen to know what they're saying, is much more aviation. So I'm just saying, please, EDC, think outside the box when you respond to this thing. Number two, the 34th Street heliport, that could be ended tomorrow. If the city and the state decide, they have to do it together, that you don't want that helicopter, heliport there. The, I will speak for the Hudson River Park Trust, they would lose 1.7 million dollars. They're fine to do that, fine, no problem. So what are you doing to work with the state to either move it out into the river? I know that's controversial with DEC, I know all of those issues. But it's crazy to have, you obviously need maybe police and you need press and you need emergency, I got it. But you have a lot more going out of that. So what are you doing to think about changing and reducing the traffic, if not eliminating it, from 34th Street? All you have to do is say, "City and state, we're changing."
Yeah, so, so council member, I, I really appreciate the, the question. We, as you mentioned, we do not operate the heliport that the Hudson River Park Trust.
There will, listen, I want to be clear. If you say to the state with Hochul and Adams, say, "We don't want it," they're done.
I, I would say we have regular conversations with the Hudson River Park Trust and happy to continue talking with you and them about the, the future of that site. But just from a jurisdictional perspective, that is not a heliport that we operate.
Okay, but I'm letting you know, with all due respect, that's a little bit of a BS answer because the, the Hudson River Park Trust will give it up tomorrow if you and the state tell them to.
I, I understand, council member, thank you.
Okay, so what, are you talking to the state about it also? The hell with the, the folks at the trust are willing to say goodbye. Are you talking to the state?
I would have to defer to Anton. I don't believe that we have had a specific conversation with the state about that asset.
Could you have one, please? Could you promise to do that?
Yes, and we can report back to you.
Thank you. And then finally, New Jersey. So I went to New Jersey, I flew in a plane. I went right over Central Park and Brooklyn Bridge Park and Governor's Island and, you know, the doors off and so on and so forth. What are you doing with the feds to advocate for the bill? Because it ain't going to happen by itself without the federal government. New Jersey makes lots of money, I've been out there, I tried to stop it. Local council member tried to stop it. It's not happening if the feds don't help us. What are you doing to help us with the federal government?
Thank you, council member. So we're part of a, a working group with the FAA and representatives of the helicopter industry, including from the New Jersey side and officials from, you know, New Jersey DOT, EDA, and are initiating those discussions to how do we look at this more holistically and across the region? We don't have the same leverage as we do over heliport operators in New Jersey. As you know, the helicopters tours that leave from Manhattan all follow over water routes. We'd like to see similar.
I negotiated that, I'm aware of it.
Yes, that's, thank you for that. And so we'd like to see as close an adherence to those routes as possible, working in collaboration with New Jersey State Schools. We're recognizing that our, our powers are limited here, we can influence and.
I know my time is up. I have two resolutions to say, "Support the federal Nadler and other acts that say, cut it, shut it down." Is that something that you support? Federal legislation to shut down tourism, either Manhattan or anyplace else, but particularly over the five boroughs? That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, thank, thank you, council member. I would say in terms of reviewing the legislation, I have the same response, excuse me, reviewing the resolution, I have the same response about the legislation in that we need to review all of them holistically and we're working closely with the Law Department on that. So I'm not yet ready to comment on our response.
That's the only way to close New Jersey, there is no other way. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. I just want to take a second to again really thank you, Chair, for leading this hearing and being such a strong voice on this issue. And I also want to thank my colleague from the Upper West Side, who has been a strong leader on this issue for a very long time. And we have many elected officials in New York City, like Congressman Nadler, Congressman Velazquez, many others who have been fighting hard to rein in the helicopter industry, but none have fought harder than Gail Brewer. And so just credit to Gail for all the work that she's done for a very long time on this. Sir, you mentioned, you know, international competition and that we're looking at other global cities and how they're reigning in the, how they're looking at electric helicopters, but also, I hope, how they're reigning in the helicopter industry. Are you aware that Paris does not allow non-essential tourist helicopter flights over their city?
Yes, I'm aware.
Okay. And yet no consideration of a similar policy is in place in New York?
That's a federal decision. So the FAA controls the airspace, so that is, you know, not up to us.
But we do control our own helipads and what happens at New York City helipads? Is any decision being considered to end non-essential tourism helicopter flights at New York City Economic Development Corporation-owned helipads?
Yeah, thank you for the question, council member. In the, the same vein of how we are reviewing the legislation that you've introduced, that is a conversation that is ongoing with the Law Department. So if the question is, "Are you considering it?", I would say yes, within the context of our review of your legislation.
I have to say, you know, I don't recall when Chair Farias notified the Economic Development Corporation of this hearing. Do you know the date that you were made aware of this hearing?
I would, I think it was about three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago. And the bills that are being considered today, almost all of them have been introduced months, if not years ago. Is that correct?
That's correct, summer 2022 for some of them.
And the expectation, you worked in governmental affairs for a long time, the expectation of agencies is to come prepared to testify on the bills at the hearings at which you attend. Is that correct?
Yes.
So to have no comment whatsoever on half a dozen pieces of legislation, you can understand how that is frustrating to the members of the city council?
I absolutely understand the frustration. I would just ask you to keep in mind a couple of different things. One, from a legislative perspective and a legal perspective, we do rely on the Law Department and their level of expertise, particularly when it comes to the complexity around federal airspace, aviation jurisdiction and so on. And so it, it is not a legal review that lies within EDC only. We do work with our colleagues at the Law Department, who I know also work with Council Legal on review as well. And so while I can't speak on behalf of the Law Department, I can say that they are, you know, earnestly reviewing the legislation from that lens.
If they were earnestly reviewing the legislation, then we would have answers at the hearing today. If this administration was taking the city council seriously, we would have answers today. It's just, it's, I mean, City Hall is sitting here, it's disrespectful. It's disrespectful for your agencies to show up here unprepared to answer our questions and to respond substantively on the legislation that we introduced. We put an enormous amount of effort into these bills, into crafting them thoughtfully, carefully, deliberately with our lawyers, making sure that they are in fact legal and appropriate. And to not get responses, it really undermines the, the, it undermines our ability to do our jobs. And it's really disappointing, no, you're not allowed, you're not, please, we'll do the, they, they like that instead, I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry to get worked up, but it's disappointing and it's frustrating and it, it really does undermine the, what we're trying to accomplish in these hearings. So I'll move on to other questions. As you shared in your early, in response to earlier questioning, we saw the number of complaints double from 2023 to 2024 around helicopter noise in New York City. What did EDC do in response to doubling of complaints, nearly 60,000 complaints, to try to lessen negative impacts in our communities?
Yeah, thank you for the question, council member. I think in terms of where our, our leverage is and where we have sort of regulatory authority, we really see that in our concession agreements and the management of the heliports. And so as we described in our testimony and in response to the council members' questions, the things that we have added into our RFP for the new operator speak directly to what we are doing to further address these concerns. So reduction of tour hours by 30%. That is something that we have the ability to do within this agreement that is separate from, you know, the FAA jurisdiction over airspace.
But, and to that, what's the current number of flights that are permitted under the current agreement?
I'm going to differ to Anton for the specifics.
Yeah, we have a flight cap at the downtown Manhattan heliport of 30,000.
30,000, and in the new RFP allows for?
It's the same flight cap.
Same, so despite the 30% reduction in hours, we're talking about the same number of helicopter flights that communities are going to be burdened by as a result of the new RFP?
Not necessarily, they'll still have to operate. We, we, we don't want to create a situation where they're, we're concentrating all that, that they should be reaching that flight cap still within the hours. They should be operating safely within those hours.
I hope that everything's operating safely, but I just mean facts, numbers. It's the same number of flights from the old RFP to the new RFP, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so I just, for me, that's really disappointing because we've seen complaints skyrocket and yet we're not doing anything to actually rein in the number of flights.
I will just point out that the, that 1% of all complaints are tours from the downtown Manhattan heliport. So although we've seen.
Well, so to that point, I, I have to say, I'll, I'll give you an example. We recently had two complaints that came into 311, then they called our office. We followed up with EDC because the complaints were dismissed as non-tourist flights. We sent in images, we sent in the course of the flights. And of course, EDC then confirmed, yes, these were tourist flights. So I'm, nobody's perfect.
I know.
And everybody makes mistakes. I only get, you know, so many times that constituents follow up with the 311 numbers that we can follow up and say, hey, this is what's real. But when you say it's 1%, and I say I've got anecdotally two complaints from recent weeks from constituents that were dismissed as non-tourist flights, but were in fact confirmed subsequently by EDC as tourist flights, I don't really know what to believe. I can tell you that when I sit in Brooklyn Bridge Park in my community and the helicopters are idling up above, that's not Blade, that's not somebody going to JFK or the Hamptons. They want to see the park. I mean, they, they could see it perfectly well from the ground, but they choose to, to watch it from the, from up above. I know some of those flights are coming from New Jersey, but a lot of those are tourist flights that are coming from our helipads and that we control. And I get that these, there's, there's state and federal regulations here, especially federal, but we control our helipads. It is fully, is it not within our power to regulate what happens at our helipads?
I think, council member, I will sort of refer back to the improvements on the flight tracking system that we have laid out for the RFP because I, I definitely see the point. And, you know, it's our teams that are following up when, you know, there is a discrepancy. And so we know that there's improvement on the data collection that needs to happen and on the transparency side. And that's the, the very reason why we have baked that into that RFP.
I, I have additional questions, but perhaps if there's a time for more, I can come back later. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just really quickly, in the RFP that's listed, that's, that we have submissions on, is there a listed leasing fee for the operators? Like, is there, is there a description of how much folks have, the operators would have to pay to utilize and lease out? have to pay to utilize and lease out of, like, usage from the heliports?
Yeah, so it's a concession that we're running through, competitive procurement. So as one of multiple criteria, evaluation criteria, it is a fee offer, and it's up to the market to come up with the most competitive fee offer to generate the most revenue to the city. But again, that's just one evaluation criteria that we're balancing, along with, you know, operational experience, and which will, and quality of life concerns as well.
Okay, great. I'd like to see our revenue directly generated from at least these agreements that we have to be higher than what we're getting, so please keep me in the loop of what that turns out to be with the RFP. Heliports emit more than 40 times the carbon than passenger cars. Does EDC see a conflict between the city's overall air quality goals that we've set with allowing the heliports to be used for non-essential purposes like air tours?
I think, Councilmember, we, we see the management of all of our assets very holistically, right? So we were in front of you a couple of months ago, talking about shore power with the cruise terminals. You know, Jennifer and her team have been working very closely with DOT on Marine Highway. We work closely with Mayor's Office of Climate and Environmental Justice on, you know, not just environmental justice communities, but air quality programming, and of course, our colleagues from DEP are with us today. So I wouldn't say that we think of any one of our, our particular program areas separate and apart from the rest. We try to think about sustainable transportation within the city's overall goals. And as EDC being responsible for things like the Green Economy Action Plan, and looking at the future of green jobs and, and other, like, really critical elements to not just the green economy, but our overall public health and environmental goals, we try to take an integrated approach as we look across the board.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to give EDC a little bit of a break and pull in DEP folks, hi folks. What's the city's current protocol for responding to and investigating helicopter noise?
Good morning, thank you for the question. DEP does not receive the 311 noise complaints for helicopters, so we do not respond to those.
Does DEP currently have the capability to monitor and report on helicopter noise levels in the city?
No, as far as we know, the technology to do so does not really exist, and so we do not have that capability to track and monitor helicopter noise.
And do you folks have an idea of what resources would be needed to implement the requirements of my bill, intro 27?
We don't, because like I said, as far as we know, the technology required by the bill does not exist. But if it were to be developed in the future, it would certainly be very expensive, in the millions, to install, maintain, and then store all the data required by the bill.
Do you folks monitor any other decibel meters throughout the city?
We have a decibel meter program to respond to muffler noise on a few roadways, roadways throughout the city.
How many roadways do we have decibel meters for?
We currently have 10 of the noise meter cameras for muffler sounds.
Okay, and are those all based in one borough or throughout the five boroughs?
They're throughout all five boroughs?
They're in four boroughs currently.
In four boroughs, so we have 10 decibel meters amongst four boroughs. Do we know how much that costs us to run?
Those meters individually are around $35,000. And then associated staff.
And how do we regulate that data or analyze that data?
The cameras are triggered by a sound level of 85 decibels, and when that sound level is hit, it takes about a 20-second video, and that video is stored.
Okay.
All other recordings are not stored, so it has a finite amount of data.
And is there a violation associated?
Correct, there's a summons. If we're able to determine the source of that noise and identify the license plate number of the vehicle-
Sure.
-we issue a summons.
Do you know off the top of your brain how much the summons is?
$800 for the first offense.
First offense, 800, okay. And it's just for the sake of me right now, because math was never my strong suit. So that's like $350,000 to at least run this program with just the meters each, not associated with administration and staff or whoever else has to rig, and the system itself. Okay, I look forward to-
I'll just add in, though, that the summonses go into the general fund.
And the summonses go into the general fund?
The penalties get paid into the general fund.
Got it. I appreciate that. That gives me a really good idea in the positive response that I should probably receive from the admin on this plan, because we do something similar already, we already issue summonses. Apparently, there's a video technology, which is great, because that could help us with what's above. And it does not seem too costly to me in comparison to a $107 billion budget.
Well, sorry, Councilmember, if I could just jump in to clarify that the program for the muffler noise would be, is very different than what we think the bill envisions.
Sure. I wouldn't know, because I don't have a response yet, but yes.
Sure, well, we can speak about, from the operational side of this bill, that we do not support it, because first, as I said, we don't think this technology exists, as far as we know, it does not exist. And then if it were to be developed in the future, of course, it would be extremely costly to install an unknown amount of meters at a cost that we don't know, because it doesn't exist yet, to maintain them, to staff a program to monitor them, and then of course, all of the data that's required, which is an extraordinary amount of data, and like Director Page mentioned, we don't store constant data with our muffler program, right? We only store the snippets of when we believe there is a violation. The bill calls for constant data to be kept, oh, I think every five seconds for an unknown amount of time, so that the storage even itself would be extremely expensive. And because DEP does not have enforcement authority over this noise, we wouldn't be able to do anything with this extremely expensive data that we've been gathering. And so we think it's much more valuable to allocate our resources in areas where we can do enforcement and can really make an immediate difference in the lives of, you know, the quality of life and the health of our neighbors.
I look forward to getting a full response on the bill and the recommendations on amendments to my bill that would better work for the agency itself and the city of New York.
Absolutely.
Ultimately, folks, as an agency, do oversee noise complaints, and with the mass amounts, I mean, from what we see from year to year, double the amounts of noise complaints we are receiving, maybe the city has to think a bit more constructively and innovatively on what we do with our city-owned property and how we actually take aggregated data from 301 and associate it appropriately to violations throughout the city to make sure we have good actors in our communities. Okay, with that, I'll end there, because these other questions that I have for you folks, we don't have a response on the bill, so it doesn't seem like I can ask them right now, but I will follow up with them, so we can have a better thorough response. I'd like to also acknowledge Councilmember Salamanca, and I'd like to call Councilmember Brewer for second round questions, followed by Russler.
Very quickly, and maybe you said this, but how, what is the timing on the RFP that's for the downtown?
Our goal, Councilmember, is to select an operator by this fall.
By this fall? And I, when I, I do appreciate coming to the electric helicopter event, what's the timing on the, on the electric helicopter? I assume it's not by the fall?
Not by the fall, unfortunately, but we are anticipating FAA certification as soon as 2025.
2025. So if, the RFP could talk about electric, but it wouldn't be able to implement until 2025, is that what you're sort of saying?
It talks about electric, and we're requiring our operator to start making investments right away in anticipation of FAA certification.
But, but electrics wouldn't be operating until 2025, ostensibly?
As much as we'd like that to be the case, the aircraft ought to be, have to be certified by the FAA first.
Okay. And is it possible to have, looking at the RFPs again, where it's not using, not implementing any helicopters that are doing, what I would consult, tourism or non-essential tasks? Because that's something that is part of that discussion with the RFP?
So the RFP takes the approach, recognizing that EDC has the ability through our concession agreements, to try to, you know, through policy moves, further restrict tour flights at DMH. And so that's the requirement, then, of reducing the tour operator, operating hours by 30%. That's an effort to be further responsive to quality of life concerns.
How does that impact that 30,000 flight number?
It doesn't. I acknowledge that we're not changing the overall annual flight cap, that still remains at 30,000, but still, we're trying to, through operations, reduce the number of tour flights and how often they're in the skies.
Okay, what, just so I understand, what is the purpose of having these tour flights? What, is it because you're afraid? I know de Blasio used to tell me, I tried with Bloomberg, he had a helicopter and he was a pilot, so I gave up. And then I tried, I tried with de Blasio, and he told me that if we didn't have them in New York, meaning tourism and non-essential, everybody would go to New Jersey. They're already in New Jersey. So we have to work on the federal to get rid of New Jersey. But it does seem to me that we shouldn't be, I don't understand the economic model, particularly if you have a new RFP that is giving you the kind of income you want, why you have to include the tourism and the non-essential. What is the economic input for that?
So a rationale from an economic perspective is that, as excited as we are about EV toll technology, it is still relatively new. And so it might be perceived as risky if we were to require EV toll only out of these operations. And so recognizing that there might need to be a transition from conventional helicopters to fully electric helicopters, maintaining some amount of tour flights, for example, allows that transition from a revenue perspective, meaning you maintain some revenue from traditional helicopters to then support incentives that then encourage the faster adoption of EV tolls.
You're just making New Yorkers crazy with this, and it's not everybody. But, and so I'm just suggesting that you really reconsider the tourism, non-essential, if there's a, you know, even if there's a period that you have to, with fossil fuels still being the main attraction or the main driver. And I'm not even clear with the electric, if they're completely quiet. It seems like they were, but I am not convinced. Please reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd now like to call, recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Gutierrez, and call on Councilmember Russler for his additional questions.
Thank you so much, Chair. And I do want to say, like, I think there were some good things in the new RFP. I know that, that I'm, you all are good professionals and you're trying, but the policy of the administration is to prioritize the needs of the top 0.001% of New Yorkers who use these helicopters over the needs of people in our neighborhoods and communities. And ultimately, that decision is made at City Hall, and the mayor is wrong. I do want to just dig in on a few specific things. You know, the implication of what you said, even though you haven't responded to any of our bills today, is that a reduction in these flights would be detrimental to the economy and move these flights to New Jersey. Do you think that extremely wealthy people who are taking flights to JFK or the Hamptons would travel from lower Manhattan to New Jersey to get on helicopters?
I think, Councilmember, the, the point that, that we tried to make in terms of industry moving to other locations is less about the personal or individual choices of a person or a company, and more about what are the opportunities, let's just say for tour flights in particular, that we do have the ability to control from DMH.
Excuse me, my question was, do you think that very wealthy individuals who go to the Hamptons or JFK, that represent a significant amount of the helicopter travel that we all are burdened by in our communities, those people who are just doing it for time, right? They don't, they're too rich and important and fancy to take cars or public transit like the rest of us, do you think they would take the time to go to New Jersey to get on a helicopter to go to the Hamptons or JFK?
Councilmember, I really cannot speak to what a hypothetical person may or may not do.
I just mean to say, it would definitely take them more time, they wouldn't do it, it would eliminate that helicopter travel. That would be to the benefit of our communities. And some percentage of the tourists would choose not to go to New Jersey, some would, some wouldn't. But ultimately, it would lead to a reduction in the total amount of helicopter activity that we are burdened by in our neighborhoods. And that would make it a positive thing. We have no idea what EDC, I mean, we know what EDC's policy is on our bills, we didn't hear it today, unfortunately, because we didn't get a response in your testimony, but it would inevitably help our neighborhoods to eliminate the non-essential tourism travel. So the idea that all of it's just going to move to New Jersey is not true. I'd like to also ask about noise. Could you just clarify, what studies have taken place to evaluate the noise impacts in places where we see chronic, intense helicopter noise like Brooklyn Bridge Park?
So I would differ back to what our colleagues at DEP said in terms of us not being aware of any specific studies on the ground in a place like Brooklyn Bridge Park that is able to assess and quantify helicopter traffic. Looking to my colleagues in case I'm misstating that, but-
You know, I would strongly encourage you to consider it, because we all have seen the research about the long-term health impacts that noise can have on people's sleep, on their anxiety levels, on cardiovascular issues. There's a relatively small number of areas in New York City that are experiencing the intense burden of this helicopter activity. You know, I can, you know, I was going to actually read you, just one of the testimonies from one of my constituents who submitted it today. "Suffice it to say that the massive disturbances to my sleep, sanity, and overall quality of life have pushed me beyond my human limits. This, on top of the blatant disregard for our suffering environment by climate crisis join riders, is why I support the legislation being considered today." I hear this from thousands of my constituents, right? You're nodding, because it's real, this is, in my district, it's not every district in New York City, but in my district, thousands of people are negatively impacted every day, but we can't say that we've studied and looked at what are the actual impacts of the noise in these communities. So I really hope that DEP and EDC will undertake the necessary studies and analysis to see what kind of horrible impact this permitted industry is having. And then I also just wanted to ask you about jobs. So remind me again, how many jobs are associated with the two helipads in New York City?
One or two.
I know the number, I was asking them for the record.
Yes, there's an estimated total of 155 jobs.
Just want to reiterate again, the public has to be silenced, thank you.
But I appreciate the knowledgeable folks in the audience. The, you must be in one of the neighborhoods. So 173, 175 jobs. Have you done any analysis that if these helipads were limited to essential activity, how many jobs would potentially be lost?
We haven't looked at that incremental difference.
I appreciate in the, there is a potential path in downtown to go to electric, which would have significant environmental and noise benefits in our communities, but I strongly want to encourage the mayor and EDC to reconsider the continuation of non-essential helicopter travel until, until the electric helicopters are permitted. And I know we're not getting any answers on anything today, but I really hope that that policy will be seriously considered. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Just some last bit of finance-related questions. How much revenue, according to EDC records, comes directly to New York City each year based on its agreements with tour operators that use NYC heliports? Is it still the amount from my oversight hearing, or has it increased, decreased?
So it's $2 million to the two city-owned heliports total each year. I don't think we have the breakdown of, of that 2 million, how much of it originates from the tours versus other types of flights.
Okay, great. And how much does it cost New York City, as estimated by EDC, to maintain the heliports each year?
So the maintenance of the heliports is covered by the operator. So, so they receive the revenues from the various uses, like tours, and in the case of the downtown Manhattan heliports, over 90% to your earlier questions, it's primarily the tours that are then supporting the upkeep of the facility. And then the revenues, there's a revenue share agreement that is, that then passes those revenues down to, to the city. And this is what we're hoping to, as you mentioned earlier, increase while still, by diversifying the revenue uses at that heliport.
Okay, thank you. And can EDC disclose any annual operating capital expenditures related to managing the two heliports to the committee?
Again, the, the maintenance for the facilities are covered by, this is why the structure works, preserves dollars from the city's standpoint for, for these facilities.
I'll add, and Councilmember, we don't have the data today, but we'll look to see if we have that and share that with the council.
Okay, great, thank you. And just my last question, when the 2016 agreement reduced tourist flights by half out of the New York City heliports, did that lower revenue have any material impacts on our budget or on EDC's budget or New York City finances?
We'd also have to, again, look at what fiscal impact that might have had on our programs, if any.
I'd appreciate looking at those numbers, so we can get a better idea, especially now with the new RFP, you're doing 30- now with the new RFP, you're doing 30% less, or requesting that at least. And I don't have any other com, Councilmembers signed up for questions, so this panel is now dismissed. As EDC and DEP folks are transitioning out, I would like to call up representatives from Borough President Reynoso and Levine's office, Lacy Talber, and a representative from Congresswoman Nidia Velazquez's office, Daniel Wiley, to the panel. I'll call Lacy and Daniel one more time. It's like Price is Right, come on down. You folks can begin when you're ready, okay?
Let's hit this, this on. All right, thank you, Majority Leader and Councilmembers. I'm from Congresswoman Nidia M. Velazquez's office, and I'll read a brief statement from her. "Over the years, I've come to the inescapable conclusion that unnecessary helicopter traffic is simply a poor fit for New York City, one of the most densely populated metropolitan areas. There have been too many helicopter crashes in New York City. Think of this, right now, no one, not the FIA, not anyone else, is actually regulating helicopter traffic above New York City. There's no minimum altitude, there's no radar tracking the air, of the aircraft. It is essentially the Wild, Wild West of urban airspace. Not only is this about safety, but it's also about the quality of life. For many of us, especially my neighbors living on the waterfront and along commuter routes, helicopter noise is a persistent problem. The sound echoes. These flights generate an amount of noise that greatly reduces the quality of life for many New Yorkers. This includes those in my district from Queens to Brooklyn. The helicopters crowd the skies to a dangerous level as we've seen result in multiple tragic accidents over the years. In Congress, we've brought renewed efforts to address this issue for the sake of all who call our great city home. That is why I am an original cosponsor of HR 7753, Protecting Communities from Helicopter Noise Act. I support local efforts to restrict non-essential helicopter traffic, and I'm proud to, to support the bill before the City Council to halt non-essential helicopter flights at the two city-owned heliports and eliminate tens of thousands of unnecessary flights. I support this and other bills to protect our community and restore the quality of life and reduce noise pollution. Enough is enough. My colleagues and I, together, will continue to fight for the day when the safety and quality of life for New Yorkers will not be put at risk for the sake of profit." Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Ferraris and members of the committee. I'm here today on behalf of Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso and Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine to again express their commitment to ridding our city's skies of non-essential helicopter travel. Helicopters are simply not necessary for either tourism or commuting, and their outsized impacts on noise and air pollution far outweigh any entertainment or convenience they may provide. Even according to the helicopter industry, the noise that they generate flying at 500 or even 1,000 feet over the city is well within the range considered dangerous by the Hearing Health Foundation. With thousands of non-essential helicopter trips around NYC every week, it's no wonder that noise complaints have risen more than 2,000% in the last five years, and we just heard doubled in the last year. The noise is disruptive to residents who live along the flight paths, Manhattan, Brooklyn's waterfronts, north and central Brooklyn, along the JFK routes, and the constant exposure can cause health impacts such as stress and anxiety, in addition to quality of life issues. We appreciate the changes the city has already implemented on the tourism industry, such as reducing the number of tourist flights, restricting flight patterns over the waterways, and exploring new technologies. However, the presence of tourist helicopters along our waterfronts is extremely disruptive. Among other issues, the noise negatively impacts the experience for residents and tourists enjoying relaxation in our city's open spaces, especially Riverside Park, Hudson River Park, Battery Park, and Brooklyn Bridge Park, where the noise is constant. The commu, I'm sorry. New Yorkers have invested billions of dollars into supporting and improving these parks, only to have their enjoyment of them diminished. Yet, noise pollution is not the only issue, so efforts to curb it only address part of the problem. Commuter helicopters use approximately 20 times more fuel per hour than the average car, depending on the model. With thousands of non-essential trips every day, the industry is a major source of air pollution and runs counter to our city's stated goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We're aware that the issue requires a regional solution. The Borough Presidents have joined with their federal colleagues to call on the FAA to ban non-essential helicopter travel from NYC's airspace, and they support Councilmember Brewer's resolution. This would address the concerns that this would just push traffic to New Jersey. So, in the meantime, we must work with the tools at our disposal. Both Borough Presidents support Councilmember Ressler's intro, which would ban non-essential helicopters operating at city heliports. Notably, the concession license agreements that allow helicopter operators to use the city's heliports do not require a cause for termination, yet despite repeated calls for EDC to ban non-essential helicopter flights, they instead renewed their agreement with the downtown Manhattan operator last year. So, in conclusion, both Borough Presidents don't believe their constituents should have to suffer from noise or air pollution for another day, just so tourists can view the city from above or commuters can pay exorbitant sums to get to the Hamptons faster, until such time as the helicopter industry can sufficiently demonstrate that it can operate in a way that does not disrupt residents' quality of life, does not pose a threat to public health, and does not use fossil fuels that result in carbon emissions. Both Borough Presidents support a ban of non-essential flights from our city's heliports. Thank you so much, and thank you for the grace with time. They look forward to working with the council.
Just remind them I gave them more time. Thank you. Thank you both. This panel is now, do we have any questions? Sorry about that, Councilmember Ressler.
Just a comment, I don't think Borough President Levine's office has ever looked, sounded as good as they do today. And just a question for, for Dan, is there anything we can do to support federal advocacy efforts and the Congresswoman's leadership around regulating helicopters in New York City?
Well, I think, what we've introduced is, is trying to get the FAA more involved. You know, there's an issue with under 1,500 feet or 1,200 feet, radar doesn't really cover because we have towers. That's why it's not a good fit for New York City. We've been, we've been calling on FAA to do more, to analyze the problem and be a partner. And obviously, the largest solution's going to have to come from both states and be a federal solution, because obviously, you know, helicopters can find another route in. But we have to address this locally here, too. So, I think what everyone is doing, you got to keep doing it and keep the pressure up.
Thank you both, and I would love to continue the conversation around each of the bills and resos that we have here at the hearing today. I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing and have not done so already, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized and in the interest of the over 100 people we have signed up today, folks will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, helicopter noise and safety. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Within 72 hours of this hearing, audio and video recordings will not be accepted. And I will call the first panel, Lyden Sleeper, Sam Goldstein, Brittany Davies, Stacy Sheard, Josh Rousseau.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Chair. I've been volunteered to go first, so thank you again. My name is Josh Rousseau. I'm the Northeast U.S. Regional Representative for Vertical Aviation International, VAI. VAI is the world's leading membership association dedicated to the industry. We represent more than 1,000 companies, over 16,000 industry professionals in more than 65 countries. I think the importance, and the critical importance of the heliport system in New York City has been well documented, so I will spare, in the interest of time, spare going into any of that. I do think the critical piece here with some of my friends from Stop the Chop in the room is to understand that, we understand that sound signatures are a common source of concern associated with helicopters and the facilities they use, which is why one of VAI's top priorities is community compatibility, being good neighbors. We are constantly engaged with our members, community groups, and industry partners in an ongoing dialogue intended to forge positive relationships that produce meaningful results for all stakeholders involved. This collaboration continues to create sound mitigation efforts and innovative solutions to fly neighborly. Additionally, our industry is developing innovative technologies such as advanced air mobility, AAM, and EV tolls, which were referenced earlier, to improve community compatibility and environmental sustainability. VAI wholeheartedly supports the efforts of Mayor Adams and EDC's prioritization of initial steps to realize a new vision for the first-of-its-kind hub for sustainable transportation. However, to be clear, this technology is still in development. It is not yet a reality. The economic impacts of enacting legislation to ban non-essential helicopters are beyond significant, as the general aviation industry holds a vital position shaping both national and state economies. In New York alone, it supports workforce of over 43,000 individuals and generates significant total economic output. The general aviation industry is vital for supporting key sectors in the New York City and state economies, including emergency services, law enforcement, utility work, transportation, tourism, and business aviation. I will be very quick. Whether it be City Council bills being discussed in this hearing or legislation currently pending before the New York State Legislature, VAI has serious concerns about the legality of any effort to regulate aviation operations. Specifically, these bills contravene well-established federal law, as the FAA holds the sole jurisdiction to regulate all aspects of aviation operations, including noise-related standards and regulations. Uniform federal authority is essential, is essential to maintaining safe and efficient transportation in the nation's airspace. Enacting these bills runs counter to just that.
I'm sorry, you are 30 seconds over?
Yep.
And you'll have to submit that for public record?
I've submitted testimony, with all due respect, Chair, you have given a little bit of latitude to a couple other people.
Right, and it's still my hearing that I'm sharing?
I understand, I understand.
And I'm saying your time is over, and we're going to the move to the next person.
Understand.
Thank you for submitting it.
Thank you for your flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Brittany Davies, and I am the Northeast Regional Director for the National Business Aviation Association, NBAA. NBAA is the leading organization for companies that rely on general aviation aircraft to help make their businesses more efficient, productive, and successful. On behalf of our 11,000-member companies, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to submit testimony to you today. As representatives of the general aviation community, we fully recognize the importance of prioritizing the safety and well-being of New York City residents. It is important to note that the business aviation industry is investing billions of dollars into technologies that will dramatically reduce noise levels and the carbon footprint of aviation. The industry is fueling research and development needed for sustainable solutions across a broad spectrum of applications. With the commitment to achieving a net zero emissions by 2050 and 40% reduction in emissions over the past four decades, our industry is dedicated to environmental stewardship and innovation. While the industry is actively implementing measures to improve safety and community compatibility, we do not believe the city has the legal authority to regulate aviation operations at New York City heliports. As designated under the Federal Airport Noise and Capacity Act, ANCA, only the federal aviation administration has authority to regulate aeronautical operations. The recent ruling of the Second Department involving East Hampton, ANCA also specifically applies to all publicly-owned facilities and prohibits access restrictions absent FAA scrutiny. Accordingly, proposed ordinances, number 0026, 2024, and 0070, 2024, should not be adopted. Likewise, the state may, the state also may not impose restrictions on operations either directly or via indirect means, such as purported taxation. And accordingly, the proposed resolutions, numbers 0085, 2024, and 00226, 2024, should not be adopted. NBAA strongly opposes all legislation to ban non-essential helicopter operations, as well as any proposal to limit the use of New York City's heliport system. However, our industry looks forward to continued engagement to identify and implement effective solutions that address concerns while ensuring the highest levels of safety and environmental stewardship. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Stacy Sheard, and I'm representing the Eastern Region Helicopter Council, an association of local helicopter professionals promoting safety, education, awareness, and advocacy. The ERHC has a community outreach program and is actively working with the FAA to address the concerns of the community and to preserve the last of the New York City heliports for the future. ERHC collaborates with our local, state, and community partners to help alleviate helicopter complaints around New York City and surrounding areas. We use data provided by the FAA to devise higher altitudes and flight paths over and around the most heavily populated residential areas. We recognize that there is room for continued improvement, and that with a collaborative effort, more can be accomplished. The ERHC's initiative to improve instrument flight routes in and out of New York City is a great example of that. I've been working on this for three years, so by partnering with the FAA, I'd like to announce that new instrument flight routes for helicopters are being designed to utilize during inclement weather. And these new routes will take helicopters to higher altitudes, they will weave us within jet traffic, they will reduce sound signatures, and the first of these procedures will come online this summer, with more instrument routes being designed for follow-on release by the FAA. By improving flight routes and embracing quieter aircraft, aircraft technology, the ERHC is demonstrating a commitment to collaboration through technology. By recognizing the value of heliports and collaborating for continued operation, we can promote innovation, enhance transportation options, and drive economic prosperity and accessibility for the community at large. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. Hello, hello, I'm Lyden Sleeper from Joby Aviation. Joby is grateful for the opportunity to testify here today and grateful for the city's continuing leadership in paving the way for electric aerial mobility. The city's announcement to add charging infrastructure to support electric vertical takeoff and landing aircraft, EV tolls, will, at the iconic Wall Street heliport, as well as East 34th Street heliport, ensures that New York City will continue to be a global leader in the future of aviation, pave the way for quiet, sustainable mobility. We're honored to bring the Joby aircraft to New York City last November, and we're grateful for all the members of the council who were there for that exhibition flight. From day one, the Joby aircraft was designed with acoustics in mind, with the number of propellers, blades, blade shape, radius, tip speeds, disc loading of all the aircraft selected to minimize its acoustic footprint and improve the character of the sound produced. The results, the aircraft registered the equivalent of 45 weighted decibels from an altitude of 500 meters at 100 knots airspeed, a sound that Joby believes will be barely perceptible against the ambient noise of cities. Takeoff and landing profiles were found to be below 65 decibels, a noise comparable to a normal conversation at a distance of about 100 meters from the flight path. Specific to the legislation... Specific to the legislation resolutions being heard today, Joby is grateful for the council's prioritization of quiet electric aviation. We share the goal of making aerial mobility quiet, sustainable, and accessible for New Yorkers. We support the city's current approach of working with the entire vertical lift industry to invest in infrastructure needed for us to take off and land from the city's heliports. By embracing public-private solutions to ready the city's infrastructure, New York City will lead the world in quiet electric aerial mobility. Once the infrastructure is installed and we're flying here, we're confident the operators and passengers will choose our quiet, sustainable aircraft, and we'll see more applications for EVTOLs throughout the region. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydon. Thank you, folks. I just have a couple of questions. How many of you operate out of one of our city heliports currently?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
We're not, we're not based at any of the heliports in New York City, but we do operate out of the heliports in New York.
Okay, and are any of you a part of the larger symposium that the EDC mentioned earlier?
Absolutely.
Yes.
All of you are?
Yes.
Yes.
And just for clarification on, let me make sure, Brittany Davies, you stated you would like to be a part of effective, you folks are thinking about effective solutions. Have we thought some of those through? Have we implemented any of those, whether it's here or elsewhere?
So we work on a continuous basis across the nation with the Vertical Aviation International Association. Our local constituents, Eastern Region Helicopter Council, we're in continuous conversations in that regard. But one thing I did mention in my written testimony that was submitted was also an initiative across multiple of our alphabet organizations in the aviation sector that's called Climbing Fast, and it is all about our sustainability initiatives moving forward as a collaboration across the aviation sector as a whole.
Great, thank you. And I just, Ms. Stacy Sheard, if you can just reclarify for me, and I think I missed it, your statement around the jet flight paths or the jet passage?
Yes, it's incredibly difficult. What's happened with the recent years is helicopters, helicopter technology hasn't increased greatly. There is similar technology in the latest helicopters as you would find in the newest Boeing jets that you would commute on. So with that technology, we are very capable of flying in bad weather conditions, inclement weather. So when that does happen, in the past, we haven't had access out of New York City because you're surrounded by four major airports, so it's just been this, this quagmire of routing systems for jets typically. So weaving helicopter traffic into that, we were very low priority. So we've been working for years with the FAA, with our, our sister and brother associations to try to build relationships and bring our issues to the forefront. And one of those was getting a little bit more prioritized on instrument departures. The FAA heard us, and about a year ago was able to meet with FAA, and we talked about our needs and how that would assist. Basically, these routes can help us depart New York over the water and climb us as fast as possible, and get us out of New York City, and blend us with jet traffic or below, or keep us clear of the flow of jet traffic, and get us to where we need to go, which is out of the city. Normally, it's an instrument departure, so when the weather descends on the city, we can depart and we don't have to fly underneath it any longer. So that's essentially what it'll do for us, and it'll really help us cut down our sound signatures so we can fly neighborly.
And for anyone to answer, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it. Being that all of you folks are a part of the symposium, I did hear in multiple testimony that we are far from, or it's not our jurisdiction or legality in terms of the determining whether or not electrification is in, in the immediacy or in the direction we heard from the EDC with their conversations with the FAA, and being a part of the symposium, that we're, they're trying to get to it in 2025, but within at least the next two years. So I'd love to hear feedback and thoughts around some of the responses you folks gave in terms of whether or not legally it's, it's our jurisdiction and like the hopes of it coming, knowing that you're all a part of the symposium and knowing that we're all receiving the information on moving towards electrification.
So I'll just speak to the, to Joby and our certification process. We're working through our process with the FAA. I think the statements made by EDC earlier about timing, working through as early as 2025 and commercial operations beginning quickly after that, that is what we are tracking toward with the FAA. So from a timeline perspective, that's correct.
Madam Chair, I would just add to, on the symposium piece, which I think is critically important to highlight, it's not just talk, and I think that's, that's really important to point out. In fact, we had a meeting scheduled previously with FAA and some of our friends in the room from Stop the Chop for today, but your hearing took precedence, and as it should. So I think we have more good news coming, and I think, you know, the symposium really should be held up as an example of that collaboration with our community partners, with our industry partners, and with government regulators as well. Certainly, as we are able to get this information out, absolutely want to keep the council apprised of that as well, so you can get that information out to your constituents as well. So I just wanted to highlight that as well.
Yeah, I appreciate, I think that from the oversight hearing to conversations with the EDC, it's conversations with other elected officials from federal government, FAA, you folks, I think that is what's brought us to this point and to these, this package of bills, and to see where we can land on ensuring that we are in lockstep with the FAA and positive actors to put a foundational setting or like a goalpost for where this industry needs to move, and actually being in consideration with communities' health and well-being and safety. So I appreciate those responses. Now, I would like to turn it over to Councilmember Brewer, who has questions.
Thank you. I mean, we have spent a lot of time on the tourism, not the transport so much, getting them to fly higher, particularly along the Hudson River, but they don't. I don't know that this little thing without doors that I was in from New Jersey could fly with the jets. So I'm just wondering, is that, is that what you're envisioning? Who's, these tourism things, to be honest with you, are more noise-provoking than perhaps even what we've been talking about today coming out of downtown. They are like constant all summer long. So my question is, what height can they fly at that would be better? Or will they do that? And can they do that? You know, I'm talking about the things without the doors.
Yes, and that is something that is in discussion, routing altitudes and restructuring routes to take them in, when, when neighbors make complaints, and we hear that, and we realize that there's an issue over a neighborhood, we have to work with air traffic control, FAA, and the powers that be in order to move routes. The FAA will hear noise complaints, ERHC will hear, we all hear the noise complaints, and that's when we bring it to the meetings and say, hey, we're, we have a hotspot here, we need to relocate this, we need to look at the altitude, we need to see what we can do to make it better for the community.
You can do anything about Kearney, New Jersey, flying to New York City? They come in the hundreds on the weekends, right over Central Park, right over Governor's Island, right over Brooklyn Bridge Park. You can do something about that?
I, no, I don't think that's what I was referring to. I was just referring to adjusting routes, routing altitudes, and adjusting locations of routes.
So do you, all right, but in other words, you can't do anything about that particular situation in New Jersey?
No, ma'am, I don't think that, that was, stopping flights is not something that we do.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, if I could just add to your question, I think, just like we work with our members respectively in our organizations in New York State, we are also working with those members in New Jersey and elsewhere as well. So I can tell you that those conversations are ongoing, literally on a weekly basis, to make sure that our members are being respectful of the communities that they live and serve and fly in. And I think, again, referring to good news that's forthcoming, and certainly you guys will absolutely have that information in your pockets. We, we have the ability to affect our members, right? We all work together, and I think it's critically important to note that we strongly, strongly encourage our members to be at the top of their game as far as best practices and being responsible to the community. So those conversations are ongoing. I think to Stacy's point, we can't force, to use that word, folks to do things, but we certainly, within our ability as an organization, an all-inclusive organization in our industry, we do have the ability to strongly encourage and push our members in the right direction, the right direction being from your perspective.
If I could also just say, you mentioned Kearney, we've got a partnership with the Kearney team where we're actually going to add our charging infrastructure at Kearney, so we'll be able to take off and land there, as well as Wall Street and East 34th Street. So we're excited about the progress we're making in the city, but we're also expanding to heliports like Kearney.
Doors off or on?
Well, we'll have doors on, I don't, yeah.
They want the, tourists want the doors off, that's the problem. I don't agree with it, but I'm telling you that's what's going on, because I was in the helicopter.
Thank you so much. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Wrestler.
Thank you so much, Chair. Just one question for Mr. Sleeper. I think that the environmental benefits of electronic helicopters are kind of obvious and straightforward. The noise benefits, I just would like some greater clarification on. We've heard from some neighbors that there are still significant noise issues, we've heard from others that they're almost silent. Could you give us some clarity based on the testing that you all have been doing?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and we actually have a partnership with NASA, where NASA came out to our facilities in California and measured our aircraft from 100 meters away at takeoff. We flew overhead at about 1,500 feet, and they actually released that study, and that was the, the sound that I mentioned before. But in the context of New York, what we're really excited about, when we were here in November, we took off, we had a chase helicopter, so you could only hear the helicopter, but the day before we flew, we didn't have the chase, and we actually had teammates across in Brooklyn Bridge Park doing measurements of, of the sound, and it was imperceptible from Brooklyn Bridge Park, and that was while we were at hover and transition. So the fundamentally different sound profile of our aircraft, we really do think will change the way people in New York experience aerial mobility, both as passengers, but also as people playing in the park and people over the city, listening overhead.
And just a quick follow-up to that, Mr. Sleeper. How did you folks monitor that?
Yeah, so we just set up microphones around because we wanted to make sure that, it was the first time we'd flown in an urban setting like New York, so we wanted to know exactly how we would hear, what it would, what it would sound like. So we just had our folk with microphone. For the study that we did with NASA, they actually came out and set up a whole set of arrays on the ground. The, the anecdote that we like to tell is when they came out, they did a bunch of measurements when we were flying overhead, and they were picking up the grass from the field next to us, so we had to mow the grass in order for them to get a more accurate reading of how, of our aircraft, because it's so quiet.
Yeah, so within your testimony, and I thank you for being brief because it was many pages, that you did have decibel ratings comparatively, and so it is, we are able to use decibel meter, or at least like noise meters to regulate some of this and, and the noise complaint issues that we have. Thank you. Seeing no other questions, this panel is dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Yes, I'm calling because I was put on hold before.
Can someone mute? Zoom participant, thank you. I'd now like to call up, it's a very important call, Laura Bernbach, Melissa Elstein, Andrew Rosenthal, William Thomas, and Kenneth Lay. Anyone can begin when you're ready, okay? Just let us know so we can get the sergeant. Sergeants, are we ready for time? Okay, you can begin.
Okay, ready? Are we operating with a two-minute time limit, just so, we are, okay. So I'm Bill Thomas, I'm a board member of Stop the Chop, New York, New Jersey, so I have submitted to you my written testimony, so I'm not going to cover all of it, because you can read it at your leisure. I would like to highlight a few key points, and also make some comments about some of the testimony that you've already heard today. Stop the Chop is the leading organization in New York City that's organized really to seek to ban nonessential helicopter flights in the New York City area, and we applaud the city council for its interest in this same issue. First, I'd like to just highlight a few of the problems, some of which have been alluded to already in the questioning, with nonessential helicopter flights. First of all, they're not safe. Someone earlier said that we don't have any crashes in New York City. Well, there have been 30 of them since 1980, including one hijacking, as my friend Andy reminds me. Excessive noise increases the risk of hypertension and heart attacks and other forms of illnesses in all of us. And they're an environmental justice issue. There are many, there are communities in New York City that have historically been disproportionately affected by all forms of pollution, and many flights fly over those very same communities. So it's for these reasons that we applaud the council, as I said before, the council's interest in the, in these issues. Want to touch on a couple kind of objections or issues that you, you hear in response to efforts to curtail these flights. One is that all the flights will just move to New Jersey. As Councilman Wrestler said earlier in his questioning, that's simply not the case. It's just not enough capacity, not enough willingness on the part of tourists who would otherwise be in New York City to schlep over to New Jersey to get these flights. A, B, the other city heliport, particularly the one on the West Side, is already at capacity, and so therefore could not accept additional flights at this time in any event. Also, tourist flights won't hurt the city economy. Even the helicopters industry-owned flawed and outdated analysis seemed to acknowledge that most of this economic activity from tourists would simply shift if we didn't have helicopter tourist flights. They would shift to other forms of, of tourism as well. In fact, you heard EDC.
You're pushing 30 seconds over, so I need you to wrap. We do have over 100 people.
So I'm going to turn it over to colleagues who will expand on some of the comments.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Rosenthal, I have lived on the Upper West Side and happily paid my taxes for over 36 years. I love New York City. I would like to thank Majority Leader and Committee Chair, Farias, for holding this hearing and being a champion of everyday New Yorkers. Unfortunately, despite promises by the EDC and industry to make things better, they have done nothing since 2016 to make life better for New Yorkers. Today, I would like to focus on 311 helicopter noise complaints. This picture, and they took it away from me downstairs, but I think we've covered, the the volume of 311 complaints and the escalation of those, I had a chart here, tells an important story, but a very incomplete one. What it doesn't show is that the problem is much bigger than the data even shows. When many, maybe most New Yorkers see a helicopter in the sky, they assume it's NYPD or news, and therefore don't think of complaining. If they did, the charts, the numbers would be much more. It does not accurately reflect the misery in the city, because sane people stop using 311 a few months after they start because there are no results. Unlike a pothole complaint or even category, other categories of noise complaints, where the NYPD shows up, nothing happens when citizens file noise complaints in 311. Instead, they will get a reply from the EDC saying either, this helicopter is not within its jurisdiction, or two, the New York City EDC determined that the helicopter tour operator was operating within the limits of the New York City helicopter sightseeing plan. I have received both of these 100% inaccurate responses in the past month, despite submitting screenshots documenting that the tour flights originated at DMH. screenshots documenting that the tour flights originated at DMH and that the flights passed directly over parkland in violation of the 2016 agreement. How many times would any of you make a complaint, given these negative responses? Lastly, I'm wrapping up, filing a 311 complaint has been made very difficult over the last four years. There is a gauntlet of questions that 99% of the citizens will be unable to answer, such as where the flight originated and whether it's a tourist flight. So multiply the numbers that have been reported by 10 or 100 and you'll get an idea of the real severity. Unlike many of the issues facing the City Council, the helicopter problem we are discussing today can be solved this year if our elected representatives choose to do so. Please pass in 26.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Folks, we will be here till midnight if we keep going like this.
Yes, people are very passionate about this, rightfully so. And we thank you so much, Majority Leader, for hosting us and as well as all the other council members for being here and your questions. My name is Melissa Elstein. I'm on the board of Stop the Chop NYNJ, as well as the board of West 80s Neighborhood Association. Both are volunteer-led, local grassroots nonprofits. We strongly support the passage of the three helicopter bills and three resolutions being heard today. I live on the Upper West Side, like Andy, and there are numerous days per week in our neighborhood it sounds like a war zone due to all the fossil fuel-based tourism commuter helicopters traversing the Hudson River, otherwise known as the new helicopter highway. And I may add that overwater doesn't necessarily help because it amplifies the noise. So the Hudson River is now a helicopter highway, as well as the many crosstown flights negatively impacting our homes as well as Riverside and Central Parks. I also thought initially that they were media, news, emergency services, but became involved with this cause when I realized that it was so unfair that simple joyrides and commutes by helicopter were creating so much misery. So basically, this volunteer work, which has consumed my life, and I'm, you know, we're up till midnight, 2:00 AM working on this, we are prepared. How could just a few polluting companies be allowed to wreak havoc on our lives to the point where the constant and disturbing noise has created enormously stressful conditions, diminished Q of L? So this is a story I hear from New Yorkers throughout the city, including from actor, mother, and Brooklynite Amy Schumer, who is filming a movie today and couldn't be here. So I am reading part of her submitted statement. She writes, "Our homes, neighborhoods, and parks are bombarded with the deafening and alarming noise of these choppers, 12 hours a day, most days. I urge our elected leaders to end the flights of these non-essential helicopters over New York City and its 9 million agreements." Nine million residents. We agree with Ms. Schumer. And to those who say the non-essential helicopter ban would harm the economy, well, I heard those same faulty arguments when I was volunteering with my neighborhood association to help ban fracking in New York, single-use plastic shopping bags and straws, smoking in bars and parks. The New York City economy will survive a ban on this niche industry, and by the way, Disney World and Disneyland have such bans. It has become untenable. No other world-class city has this unnecessary problem. It's time we end the Wild West-like chopper skies over New York, improve public mass transit, and promote clean and green, quiet transportation modes instead. Thank you so much.
Good morning, or good afternoon at this point. I'll try to be as quick as I can. And I know some of these points have been made already, so I'll try to improvise a little here, but I'm not as good as that, at that, as some of the others here in the room. So my name is Laura Bernbach. I'm the Executive Director of the Brooklyn Heights Association, as well as an advisory board member of Stop the Chop, New York, New Jersey. I want to thank all of you, members of the council, and staff from our borough presidents' offices and federal representatives here for your attention and commitment to regulating helicopter noise, pollution, and safety in our city, which is evidenced in part through the bills and resolutions under discussion today. My hope is that we are finally going to have some relief from the detrimental impacts of fossil fuel-based helicopter flights on our community's environment and quality of life. We've heard how New Yorkers are disturbed in our beautiful public spaces. It seems incredibly bizarre to me that we would spend taxpayer dollars, investment, time, created nonprofits to guard our waterfront parks, the amazing things happening at Governor's Island, Central Park, et cetera. And yet we allow these, this relentless noise and pollution to disrupt our experience in those public spaces that are really treasures of our city. Why would we invest the time and money into creating these spaces for people to enjoy and then literally ruin them for the benefit of some joyriding tourists and some folks who can't get to the Hamptons quickly enough? It just doesn't make any sense. Noise pollution, we know, is deadly. We've known it for years. Numerous studies confirm this. We've talked about the impact of the pollution and the fossil fuels. We've talked about safety. We've had tragic accidents associated with helicopters, not to mention the risks of terrorists or other bad actors using our skies against us. We heard already this morning that it's like the Wild West. The FAA does not regulate appropriately the airspace over New York, which is bizarre if you think about that for a city like New York. So I'm going to wrap up here. I just want to emphasize that for the trade-offs involving our health, our safety, and our environment, you'd think there'd be substantial economic benefit coming to New York City. There is not. So I implore the council and the mayor to prioritize the well-being, safety, and environmental sustainability of our city and its millions of residents over the privilege of a very few and end these flights as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Kenneth Lay. I am testifying as a Brooklyn resident and a board member of Stop the Chop. I previously testified before this council in November 2022 about the incessant and deafening helicopter flights that constantly fly over huge swaths of Brooklyn, including many environmental justice communities such as Brownsville, East New York, and more. The situation has, if anything, only worsened. Last week, for example, a blade flight passed over the park where I was watching the solar eclipse with hundreds of my neighbors at the exact moment of peak coverage, rendering it impossible to speak to anyone for nearly 30 seconds. This happens dozens of times per day. You already heard my story and my whole herd of support for these bills, so I will instead use my time to let other area residents have their say. Here are a number of quotes we at Stop the Chop have collected from New Yorkers. We have hundreds more I will be submitting as my written testimony. Brooklyn, "There is perhaps no activity that disturbs more residents for the benefit of so few people than the noise associated with these unnecessary helicopter flights." Manhattan, "The excessive noise on the Upper West Side has become intolerable, yet another reason for longtime New Yorkers to leave the city." Bronx, "The helicopters are tormenting spite and divel. Please stop them now." Manhattan, "Please let us live in peace in our apartments." Brooklyn, "It is outrageous that fun for a few non-New Yorkers makes life miserable for thousands of voting New Yorkers." Queens, "I work at the Statue of Liberty and the helicopter noise is outrageous. It truly impacts my day and the visitors of the statue negatively." Manhattan, "I report noise problems in the 311 app and I call my representatives and nothing seems to happen." Brooklyn, "It's become impossible to sit in Brooklyn Bridge Park or in the Brooklyn Promenade. The helicopter noise is unrelenting." Queens, "This is not bearable anymore." Manhattan, "The helicopter noise along the Hudson is utterly outrageous, is greatly affecting the pleasure to be found in Riverside Park." Bronx, "The helicopters are so loud and hover over people's apartment apartments at all hours of the day and night." Brooklyn, "We can't even sit outside and have a conversation sitting next to each other because of these commuter helicopters." Manhattan, "It's high time that politicians began listening to their taxpaying constituents rather than lobbyists. This is a grievous environmental and quality of life issue." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Don't see any questions for panelists. Councilmember Wrestler?
Just for Ms. Bernbach, BHA gets any impressive amount of incoming from neighbors across Brooklyn Heights about different quality of life issues. Could you just give some context on like, how does helicopter complaints compare to other issues that you hear from neighbors?
Sure, absolutely. We've been getting complaints about helicopters for years, but even more so in the past, I would say, three, three to four years, as evidenced by the 311 complaints. It's definitely a top, top issue and a top concern of residents in Brooklyn Heights who can hear them, those who are living anywhere close within a few blocks of the waterfront, who are trying to enjoy the promenade, as we heard, who aren't trying to enjoy Brooklyn Bridge Park, who are down in, you know, traveling down into Dumbo. I mean, I'm hearing it constantly, again and again and again.
Thank you, folks, so much for your advocacy and your testimony today and the work we've been doing together. I appreciate it. You are now dismissed. I'd now like to call up Janet Handel, Stephen Tannenbaum, Michael Hanneman, Roger Manning, and Merritt Burnbaum.
Do we start, or?
Yes, we're ready to begin.
Hi, I'm Roger Manning, co-founder of MAGIC, the metro-area Governor's Island Coalition. And as you may have heard, Governor's Island is severely affected by sightseeing helicopters. Governor's Island, the city's unique public space in the middle of New York Harbor, is seriously impacted by sightseeing helicopter noise on a daily basis. The constant aerial assault on the island's historic District National Monument, High School, parklands, arts, and environmental projects, and wildlife, has been described as soul-crushing. That's a quote from more than one person. At times, we've counted as many as 18 helicopters in 15 minutes going by. And yes, they do fly over water, but the Buttermilk Channel is so narrow, it doesn't really help. And then the flights from New Jersey tend to hover over the island for long periods of time. And, you know, of course, I'd say, I'd say, the majority of the flights do come from the, like, the Wall Street heliport. But a lot of helicopters do come from New Jersey, so we're hoping that that federal thing that's in the works is successful, as well as this awesome city council stuff that you all are putting forward. And that's it. I'd like to, well, we have thanked Stop the Chop for all their work.
There we go. Stephen Tannenbaum, I live and work in Prospect Park South in central Brooklyn, and I'm here to bring you news from, from out there that it's not just a waterfront issue. We're, the JFK route passes through our historic landmark district, mainly wood-framed houses, so the residents can't even escape the sound by going inside. The other issue in central Brooklyn is that these helicopters are veering off the FAA helicopter route that's Flatbush Avenue, and they're basically making a shortcut to the tip of Manhattan and then to the West 30th Street heliport. And that path takes the helicopters over Prospect Park, over the parade grounds where all the ballfields are, over the Caton School Playground, and it's adjacent to the Brooklyn Botanic Garden. And I just think that in a, you know, a civic place, there's, you know, no reason to be ruining these, these crown jewels of the city. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Janet Handel, and I'm president of the Waterside Tenants Association in Manhattan and represent the 4,000 people living there. I want to take a moment to thank the Majority Leader, Councilmember Brewer, and Councilmember Wrestler for your leadership on this really, really important topic. Waterside is located in Manhattan on the East River between 23rd and 28th Street, directly across the FDR from Bellevue. We are built on a triangular platform in the river, which places us out in the middle of the river. At this spot, the East River is a little over half a mile wide. We are here today to speak in support of the package of bills, especially given that we have the very, very near to us, the heliport on East 34th Street, which provides almost incessant noise, and it has significant impacts on our community. However, the tenants at Waterside think that this package needs to be expanded to include the seaplanes that land on the East River directly in front of us. These seaplanes use the 23rd Street Marina for passenger embarking and disembarking. The Marina is managed by EDC. All of the issues, excuse me, all of the issues cited about the helicopter noise and air pollution apply to the seaplanes. With, but there's the additional point that I wanted to make about this, the helicopters pretty much go up and down, but the seaplanes have to have a runway to take off and land. In the summertime, they land, we have planes about every three to four minutes. So it is absolutely incessant, you know, Friday afternoons, Thursday afternoons, Sunday night, Monday morning. It's dangerous because these planes, you see them just like that, you know, they're, they're lined up, and I'm getting down to next to nothing. So anyway, I just want to tell you that it's very risky to Waterside and also to, you know, the other side of the river. When they started flying there, nothing was built there. Waterside wasn't even built there. It's a very different situation now, and it needs to be rectified for public safety. Thank you. And health, thanks. Yep. Oh, sorry.
Hi, my name is Michael Hanneman. I am a legal expert at the Natural Resources Defense Council and a law student at NYU School of Law. NRDC is a not-for-profit legal and scientific organization active in a wide range of environmental health, natural resources protection, and quality of life issues across the country, around the world, and here in New York City, where our main offices have been located since the organization was founded in 1970. Excessive noise threatens the health and quality of life of New York City residents. Exposure to heightened transportation noise increases the risk of arterial inflammation and major heart problems. And research has indicated that it does so independently of other environmental, socioeconomic, and behavioral factors. Helicopter noise is especially harmful to human health because it is intermittent and exceptionally loud. Researchers have found that intermittent noise is associated with higher rates of heart disease, stroke, and death, as compared to comparable levels of background noise. And chopper noise is especially piercing. The FAA and NASA have both found that the public perceives helicopter noise to be twice as loud as comparable decibel fixed-wing aircraft. The noise from these gratuitous helicopter flights is inescapable in New York City. It bombards residents multiple times per day in their own homes, in their workplaces, and in the city's public parks. Noise is not the only environmental hazard imposed by necessary helicopter flights. Tourist helicopters produce approximately 950 pounds of carbon dioxide emissions every hour, which is over 40 times the average hourly emissions of a passenger car containing the same number of people. Some helicopters still burn toxic leaded aviation fuel. The EDC-owned East 34th Street heliport and downtown Manhattan heliport produce, as of 2022, 58,000 helicopter flights annually, and 95% of those flights are tourist joyrides. It makes little sense to allow these highly polluting and unnecessary flights to continue at a time when the city is also spending billions of dollars on climate change resiliency projects. For these reasons, NRDC supports each of these three bills and three resolutions under consideration today. These would cut polluting helicopter air contaminants, achieve city and state level warming emissions reduction goals, and reduce noise levels across the city, improving the quality of life for hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Merritt Burnbaum. I'm the president and CEO of Riverside Park Conservancy. I'm here to voice our emphatic support for all the legislation being considered today. Riverside Park Conservancy works through an agreement with NYC Parks to help the city care for 450 acres of parkland that spread across five parks along six miles of waterfront in upper Manhattan from West 59th Street to West 181st Street. So in other words, we care for the precious public green space that is adjacent to the major highway for helicopters that was mentioned before, i.e. the Hudson River. For decades, non-essential helicopter traffic has traversed this river with impunity, providing tourists, as has been mentioned dozens of times today, with a 15-minute joyride while saddling our parks with extreme noise pollution, carbon emissions, and environmental degradation. The incessant noise from helicopter traffic disrupts the tranquility of our parks, shattering the peace and serenity that these natural spaces are meant to provide. Families seeking respite from the hustle of city life are instead met with the relentless roar of these menaces overhead. And it's not just an annoyance, it's an attack on our mental well-being and enjoyment of our public spaces. And it isn't just noise. As was mentioned, about accidents on a sunny Saturday morning in 2007, when Riverside Park's ballfields are normally filled with hundreds of children, helicopter had to make, tourist helicopter had to make an emergency landing on the ballfield right on the infield at 77th Street. Thankfully, this happened in July, which was after the main baseball season. Otherwise, it could have been much more catastrophic. Beyond the noise and safety concerns, we Beyond the noise and safety concerns, we cannot overstate the environmental impacts of the constant helicopter traffic. The carbon and pollutant emissions contribute to air and water pollution, further jeopardizing the health of our communities. And so I just wanted to say, knowing that I'm speaking to the Economic Development Committee here, Parks, as you know, brings in tens of millions of dollars of concessions to the city coffers, which really dwarfs the 2.7 or 2 million that the city earns from these heliports. Thank you.
Seeing no questions, the panel is now dismissed. I'd now like to call up Roland Lewis, Alex Matheson, Warwick Price, Markel Hancock, and Ken Coughlin. Trying my best with pronunciations here today, folks. I know how that is. Farias.
All right. Good afternoon. Attorney for Farias, Councilmember Roland Lewis, a consultant to Stop the Chop. I'd like to make two very brief points, one based on my prior employment and one based on where I live. I used, I ran an organization called the Waterfront Alliance for 13 years. And you've heard, I think, and you'll hear more from my friend Warwick and others, the effect that helicopter traffic has on the tranquility and the, of our public spaces. I'd like to talk to you about, actually, the economic impact. I think Merritt alluded to this a second ago. One of, one of the statements was from, that you'll have in, in the press release, and is from Alex Pincus, who runs the Grand Bank's auto, Grand Bank's oyster bar. And he employs 300 people. And he's had customers ask for refunds because of helicopter tracker, because of over his restaurants, 300. That's far more than that employed by the helicopter industry. And if you've been to other great waterfront cities, London or Stockholm, and we talked about Paris, Lincoln was talking about that before, these are economic engines. We've invested billions and billions of dollars into our waterfront, thankfully, with great parks and all, and the ferry trains, and all sorts of things happening on the water's edge. We could have so much more economic activity if it weren't for the nuisance of helicopter traffic. So the, we're leaving money and jobs on the table, is what I'm trying to say, by this, this industry continuing. The second point is just basically where I live. I live in Flatbush, working-class community, Simoleter Park, Chester, nurses, sanitation workers, you name it, the essential workers, the backbone. I, as, as mentioned before, I used to think there were police helicopters overhead all the time. They are not. I tell my neighbors, yes, they are going to the Hamptons, yes, they're going to JFK. It is unfair. They go over our neighborhood, they go over East New York. These work, it is an economic, I mean, equity issue that you have to address as well. So thank you for your time. Please push harder, push fast, get this, get this done. More at every level of government that, that we move this ball forward, the sooner we'll be done with this plague, as my colleague said earlier.
Hello, my name is Ken Coughlin, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Manhattan Community Board Seven in support of the bills that are before us to reduce or eliminate nonessential helicopters over New York. I'm also a board member of Stop the Chop NYNJ. Community Board Seven encompasses the Upper West Side of Manhattan from 59th through 110th Streets. On most days, the loud drone of helicopters passing overhead has become the new normal in our neighborhood. There, these are tourist and commuter flights traveling up and down the Hudson and crossing the district. Tens of thousands of these flights originate or land at the two city-owned heliports. These tens of thousands of flights have been matched by tens of thousands of complaints to 311. Between 2022 and 2023, helicopter noise complaints in our district nearly doubled from 11,000 to more than 21,000. In January 2020, Community Board Seven voted unanimously to support our elected officials' efforts to reduce helicopter traffic in the city, including support for a federal bill that would prohibit nonessential flights within New York City airspace. One year later, again by unanimous vote, we called on the city to stop promoting helicopter flight, helicopter sightseeing tours on its marketing website, NYC &amp; Company. These promotion, this promotion subsequently ended, thanks to the efforts of Gail Brewer when she was Brewer President. And I am submitting those CB7 resolutions here. Manhattan Community Board Seven strongly supports the current council bills to end nonessential flights at the two city-run heliports, as well as other proposals and resolutions to reduce or ban tourist and commuter traffic over our district and city. Thank you.
Is it on? Thank you. I'm Warwick Price, the founder and president of the Battery Conservancy. We've been working under the constant deafening noise of helicopters for over 30 years. We've transformed New York's historic battery. These 25 acres are just a mere 280 meters from the downtown heliport, with its perpetual engines that never shut down during their three 30,000 annual trips. It is constant. Yes, all-day noise from 30,000 choppers with its average of four passengers, talking about 120,000 people, versus the Battery's annual visitorship of 44 million people who pass by, commute through, come to see the statue, or take classes at the Battery Urban Farm. How dare EDC prioritize a detrimental business over a well, the well-being of millions of children and adults who desperately need and seek nature, beauty, and a livable community? We are a 24/7 work community, which began in the early 90s and continues growing with a vigorous rate of residential conversion today. The Battery Conservancy, with its partners at New York City Parks and with funding by the New York City Council, has created a paradise of 240,000 square feet of perennial gardens, the Sea Glass Carousel, acres of woodland, the Battery Playscape with Showbox Theater, and two urban farms. We value the buzz of our dragonflies and the pollinator bees, and the joyful voices of children at play, all compromised by nonessential chopper noise. I submit my testimony with a letter, a letter from a neighboring school that no longer will use our Showbox Theater for its Shakespearean plays because of battling constant noise from the heliport. The most difficult aspect of producing these theatrical things is ambient noise, and they cannot come any longer. I plead for the passage of your council-initiated bills today. We must, we must ban all of the nonessential flights. To talk to EDC, right now in the Battery, two major climate projects are taking place. The one along the water's edge is run by EDC, it's over $200 million. As you'll see from these two photos, taken in January 13th-
You are, you are 30 seconds over time. I know you submitted with your testimony visuals as well.
And then these photos, I will also submit. Climate change is now.
Yes.
These breaching of our waterfront happened in January this year.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I appreciate it.
Ready? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, Majority Leader Farias and other honorable council members. Gail, my old friend Gail. First, I want to thank you for the work you're doing here. I would urge you, though, to go for a full ban of nonessential helicopters. The whole EV toll idea is kind of a pipe dream at this point, anyway. It's going to be years until those are really in, in great enough number and reliability to replace petrol helicopters. I'm here for one specific reason, which is to encourage the city to drop its plan to basically give a new five, and let's be realistic, 20-year license to a heliport at the downtown Manhattan Pier heliport, instead of returning Pier Six to its original use as a maritime freight terminal. There's at least one application before the EDC now that is putting forward a marine, maritime freight-focused proposal. All the other ones are helping more helicopters. The, the city has paid lip service with a 10% portion that goes to maritime freight, but it's not real. If we're serious about transitioning to a more climate-friendly city, which we should be the leader on, we need to start finding those few piers that are left and devoting them to blue highways, to green freight. The, I've included in my, in my testimony, a, a report prepared by the Center for Postcarbon Logistics, but it makes it very clear, there's an overwhelming case for maritime freight over helicopters at Pier Six. Better economics, more jobs created, more public benefit gained, and virtual disappearance of noise and pollution. I just want to say also that the, this, this initiative of blue highways is the next logical step to follow congestion pricing. With a fully functioning maritime freight pier, you could get more than 1,000 trucks a day off of New York City's streets, bridges, tunnels, highways. It'd be a phenomenal change and improvement to our air quality, safe, street safety, et cetera. I want to say two more quick things, and that is, for decades now, the city has promoted blue highways. Very little is done. This is an opportunity for the city council, for the Adams administration, to finally make good on those many declarations and actually put some boats in the water, electric boats, to move our cargo and free up our roads and bridges. And the second thing, just to remind you, it doesn't get mentioned a lot, is that this is a public asset, publicly owned asset, it's a maritime asset. Why are we devoting it to private profit with so little money to the city, with so huge an impact on tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of New Yorkers for private profit? This is a public asset, it should be devoted to public benefit. It is not today. We have a chance to do it right.
You're at 30 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I tried to say that not as articulately as you when I was questioning them. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, folks, so much. This panel is dismissed. And I'd like to call Suzanne Lee, Kate Mulligan. I'm so sorry if I butchered that. Mark Young, Norris Raymaker, Roger Baron. Maybe it's Kate Maslegan? Maslegan? It's okay? You can begin when you're ready. Yeah, we, we're keeping a little pile of the folks that aren't coming up, just in case. Please state your name and then read your testimony.
Good morning. My name's Mark Young. I'm representing the South Midwood Residents Association. Anybody who wants to partner with us, our email address is southmidwoodhelicopters@gmail.com. For some of you who don't know, South Midwood is in central Brooklyn, just west of Flatbush Avenue, near Brooklyn College, and we have the good fortune to be right under one of the two primary routes of helicopters from Manhattan to JFK Airport, along with many other communities in Brooklyn. As you've heard, every day, we have repeatedly helicopters flying at 500 feet, or sometimes less, right over our homes, our businesses, and our public spaces. Something really must be done to address this issue. We join all of our partners here today in support of the bills focusing on the city, the city-owned heliports. But the main reason we're here today is just to make it clear to, to the council members and others that the proposals that only focus on the city-operated heliports do not have much of an impact on the communities in South Midwood and most of your constituents in Brooklyn. The fact of the matter is, the vast majority of the helicopters that fly over our neighborhoods are from the West 30th Street heliport that you've heard about before. That is owned by the Hudson River Park Trust. If you're a Brooklyn member of the city council, you really need to work with your constituents to pressure the Hudson River Park Trust Board, who are appointees of the governor, the mayor, and the Manhattan Borough President, to rethink how they choose to utilize their open space. The irony is not lost on me and us, that the Hudson River Trust's mission, what it is, and it's, it's actually sponsoring a heliport that produces so much environmental negative impact on the community. The first step, and I'll wrap up, the first step and the main point we want to make is we want you to join Councilmember Brewer in support of the legislation, Resolution 226, that focuses on the state legislature, and to call on them to amend the Hudson River Trust Park Act by banning nonhelicopter use at that airport. Thank you.
If you did turn on your microphone.
Hello, my name is Susan Lee, and I represent Hudson Classical Theater Company. We are a nonprofit theater company that has performed in Riverside Park for the past 20 years. We perform on the north patio of the Soldiers' and Sailors' Monument in Riverside Park, on West 89th and Riverside Drive. We produce three full summer productions, each running one month long in June, July, and August. We offer these plays to the public and don't charge tickets. As we are an outdoor theater company, the helicopter traffic that crosses overhead over the monument has been a long-running problem and seems to be getting worse with every passing year. The noise is deafening, and we have to stop our show and wait for the helicopters to pass. One evening, we decided to count the number of helicopters that flew overhead during one of our shows, and the number was 24 helicopters. This is from, one Sunday evening, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. It is extremely difficult to perform with this nonstop helicopter traffic, and it is such a terrible disservice to the roughly 3,000 audience members who come to our shows every summer. They come from all five boroughs, the tri-state area, and we often get national and international tourists, all excited to see an outdoor summer show, only to have the experience marred by the nonstop disturbance of the helicopters. It is also a huge disturbance to the roughly 100 people who work with us every summer, from actors, directors, costume designers, artists, and production teams, who work so hard on every show, only to suffer through the increasing noise of the helicopters that just disrupt every production. We sincerely hope something can be done about this helicopter traffic before we begin our 21st season of producing classical theater in Riverside Park this summer. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Norris Raymaker, and I am from Jersey City, New Jersey, and I have lived there for 30 years. And I want to thank you so much for your legislation, for sponsoring and writing this legislation, because you are paving the way for New Jersey. Know that our elected officials and the residents in Hudson County support your legislation. Nonessential helicopters, of course, are ruining our quality of life. We are subjected to tourist commuter and charter helicopter traffic that flies over or to New York City, to JFK, to Newark, LaGuardia, and Long Island. We cannot enjoy our parks. Our homes are, they vibrate, and the noise is heard inside and outside. It's very disturbing. You cannot have a conversation with people when you're on the street and the helicopters are flying over. They fly over our schools, they fly over our places of worship, they fly over Hoboken, they disrupt learning and services. It also impacts our enjoyment of New York City. So last summer, I was at Lincoln Center, and I saw and heard helicopters hovering over Central Park. And New York City is a world-class city, but unlike Paris and London, which have banned helicopter traffic, helicopter corporations here continue to degrade our beautiful New York City, the New York Harbor, Ellis Island, and Governor's Island, Liberty State Park, the Statue of Liberty, the Brooklyn and Washington Bridges, and other sacred metropolitan landmarks. It's ironic that we have banned plastic bags in New Jersey, but our hands are seemingly tied when it comes to banning nonessential helicopters. We have legislation in committee at the state level that has not made it to the floor. We have been advised that federal legislation will solve the helicopter problem, but that too has not advanced. So you have a unique opportunity to dramatically reduce nonessential helicopters. So you have a unique opportunity to dramatically reduce nonessential helicopters, and I'm urging you, please take the opportunity to regulate nonessential helicopter traffic in the greater New York City area. We are indebted to you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Kate Madigan from the Public Theater. I just want to note, it's interesting that the previous panels were talking about using instruments to measure sound pollution, but they weren't talking about human ears, and that was very interesting to me. So, the increase in helicopter usage and noise directly impacts the quality of life for many New Yorkers. Every summer, tens of thousands of New Yorkers experience this disruption at the Delacorte Theater during performances of Free Shakespeare in the Park. After having waited hours in line for free tickets, thousands of New Yorkers settle into their seats to experience Free Shakespeare in the Park, only to have their experience disrupted by helicopters hovering overhead. Passengers and pilots require ear protections, however, the average citizen isn't prepared to carry around noise-canceling aviation headsets. Additionally, helicopters make more noise when turning compared to flying straight, as the change of direction alters the air vortices around the blades. Therefore, any helicopter that circles around the open-air Delacorte Theater in Central Park during nightly performances maximizes noise pollution, aka sound signatures. The Public Theater has actively been working on this issue at every level of government. The organization is currently seeking congressional support for a federal study that would illuminate the impact of helicopter operations over New York City. Thankfully, Congressman Nadler-Saff has listened to our quality-of-life concerns. We hope the federal government conducts this study with human ears in order to inform policymakers at the city-state and federal level to the challenges facing communities. We welcome the proposals of introductions 0026, 27, and 70 restricting nonessential helicopter operations over New York City. It is essential to improving the quality of life. Please reach out to our team with any further questions, support with research points. Thank you, Chair Farias, council members, committee council and staff for your work on this topic. The Public Theater appreciates your leadership.
Just in time. Thank you so much. If you can hold one second, Councilmember Brewer has questions.
Susan, I have a question. I know we've been talking to Phil Cohen a lot, your colleague. Are there any, we've done so many press conferences with New York and New Jersey, and I appreciate it on this topic. Are there any localities, because I know what's going on in the state, but are there any localities in Jersey that have passed any bans? Because you have the, you know, major number of those doorless that fly pretty constantly, because I've been enough, so I know.
Well, Hudson County itself, at the county level, passed resolutions in favor of the New Jersey state legislation. Jersey City also passed a resolution, Hoboken passed a resolution. So we do support the reduction of, or the elimination, really, of nonessential helicopters. We just are struggling to figure out how to make it effective.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, folks, this panel is now dismissed. I'd now like to call up David McConnell, Diane Park, Dorothy Lyon, Brenda Quitrini, and James Harrington. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Diane Park from Waterside Plaza. Any action or legislation to restrict or eliminate helicopters must also include the extremely dangerous seaplanes that are taking off from and landing in the East River and docking at the Skyport Marina on East 25th Street in Manhattan, also city-owned. My husband and I personally witnessed a seaplane heading straight towards our window before it veered off. Seaplanes are not regulated or monitored by air traffic control. Pilots visually land and take off in the river at their own discretion, making seaplanes extremely dangerous. Skyport Marina, where the seaplane docked first opened in 1939, the riverfront and the river have changed significantly since 1939. Waterside Plaza wasn't built, nor was the nearby United Nations School, nor the British International School. There were no high-rises along the river in Brooklyn and Queens in 1939, as there are today, nor were there the full fleet of ferries and party boats and barges and everything else going up and down the river. With all of this activity and the residential buildup along both sides of the river, seaplanes are taking off and landing on a small strip of water between two bridges in a congested residential community. It is no longer safe or appropriate for these planes to be taking off and landing in the river at this location. These planes are an accident waiting to happen. What are even the rules for these seaplanes? Can they take off and land within 50 feet of residential buildings? Can they take off and land right next to schools? Are multiple planes permitted to circle in the river while they're waiting to dock at the marina? How many planes are permitted to take off and land on any given day? Can they take off during storms, after dark? Can they fly dangerously close to the Con Edison Power Point, or fly dangerously close to the Williamsburg and Queensborough Bridges? I have witnessed all of these violations myself, along with my neighbors. Something needs to be done about these seaplanes.
Thank you. I just want to bring to your attention, I attached several photos.
I was going through.
Okay, good, that show these planes in action. It's unbelievable.
Thank you for your testimony and for the stockpile of photos that you've given. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, sure, hi. Hi, my name is Dorothy Lyon, and I live in Brooklyn Heights, across the East River from the downtown Manhattan heliport. Over the last two years, the number of helicopters landing and taking off from the heliport has increased dramatically. The noise from the helicopters can often be heard in my living room to the extent that I cannot accomplish anything productive. There is no place in my apartment to escape the noise. The loud sound of reverberating helicopter blades is especially bad in Brooklyn Bridge Park. I've watched from the park as helicopters have landed and taken off from the heliport every four to five minutes in the afternoon. The helicopter traffic starts to increase around 2:00 PM and lasts until about 7:00 PM. Weekends are even worse, as the helicopters begin their flights earlier in the day. The only time they don't fly is when it is rainy and/or windy out. It doesn't matter whether the choppers are flying over the park or the river, the sound is still really loud. It is hard to enjoy being in the park with this overwhelming racket. And I would say, these seem to be mainly commuter flights, because I'm watching them, and they are heading off towards JFK, or over South Brooklyn, or heading down to Newark. So it's, to me, I'm not sure they're tourist flights, to me, they seem to be more commuter flights. And they're, it's just overwhelming. I would just say that I fully support the bills and resolutions before the City Council, but I would actually say the number of commuter helicopters to area airports needs to be sharply reduced, and I actually would like to see the DMH used only for emergency purposes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brenda Quitrini. Nonessential helicopters have been flying right above the area where I live in Astoria, Queens, on a daily basis, from early morning to late at night for several years now. These outdated, polluting, incredibly loud objects feel entitled to interrupt any common human action, like having a conversation in the apartment, or focus on studying and working just to transport few privileged people to and from the Hamptons. So the measured decibel levels on a helicopter flying over my apartment ranges between 78 to 86, which are considered dangerous for the human ear. And I have observed how even birds and other terrestrial animals display a disoriented behavior while these obnoxious objects fly over them. And to add the amount of pollution spread above our heads and right into our lungs is unacceptable, especially when the air quality is already affected by a long list of other pollutants, like traffic, factory fumes, and the thousands of daily flights approaching JFK and LaGuardia. And some of the comments from the Noise Complaints Ride Avenues app stated, for example, "Why has the city allowed these helicopters to take over our airspace? It's dangerous, bad for the environment, and detrimental to human and mental and physical health. Please make it stop circling the East River near downtown Brooklyn on an awful day, still going at 9:15 PM, 400 feet. Sounds like an invasion, it's so loud." 11:30 PM, tourists ride, "Can we get no peace?" Incredibly loud. It's going to wake our child. This doesn't happen over other metropolises, not even Disney World. I'm in a constant state of alert here. Unfortunately, New York City is letting its citizens' mental and physical health deteriorate day after day by allowing these nonessential flights to harass them on a daily basis. I don't want to be forced to move out of the city like many others have done already. The city of New York needs to take a stand and protect its residents' health. That's why we agree to pay taxes to both New York State and New York City. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for inviting me and listening to my concerns regarding helicopter noise and its constant aggravation. I took the liberty of sending a 10-second video/audio clip of my visit recently to the Brooklyn Botanic Japanese Garden to you, which was marred by the intrusion of, what else, helicopters. I hope you had a chance to peruse it. I'm not a priest, far from it, but simply put, God does not dwell in turbulence. And there is nothing more turbulent than helicopters. The ability for us as caring people to practice human compassion is compromised in an environment where the spirit is stilled by a constant barrage of worldly intrusion. The arrogance of helicopters is an especially galling example of man's indifference to his fellow man. It breeds contempt on both sides, by those who selfishly ignore their fellow citizens' right to a calm, peaceful, daily existence, and the hateful scorn felt by us, subjected to helicopters' daily torture. This is New York City, and noise is a byproduct of living in it. But there are limits to what is acceptable and necessary. The impatient driver stuck in a traffic jam who keeps his hand on the horn to no avail is frustrated. But this is an everyday part of living in New York City, and must be tolerated. Helicopters, on the other hand, are of a different magnitude altogether. They are equivalent to an invasive species out to destroy our very existence, serving no discernible purpose other than gratifying the whims of a few. Where's the time go? I have to tell you, I can remember a time when the lower Manhattan heliport was only used by like the president or the pope. Maybe Frank Sinatra. I don't know. I remember Mayor Bloomberg, a licensed helicopter pilot. Can I repeat that? Mayor Bloomberg, a licensed helicopter pilot, has opened up the floodgates. This is, it all came from him. And you have a chance to rectify that mistake. It's in your capability to do that, and I certainly hope you do that. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you all. Thank you so much. And I'd like to call up Mark Bierman, Anna Rodriguez, Monica Elias, Christine Collister, Begin when you're ready.
Oh, is it on?
This is.
Can you hear me? Okay. This is a screenshot of a helicopter flying over my apartment in Park Slope at approximately 50 feet above my building. According to the FAA's reports, and I'm shocked to hear the DEP say they don't know how to measure sound, it's quite extraordinary, because Alexander Bell created, measured decibels over 100 years ago, and the FAA, in a report called Aircraft Source Noise Measurement Studies, puts the Bell 407 that was flying over my apartment at 110 decibels at 200 feet. At 50 feet, it's over 120, the sound of a jet engine. Now, I want to speak to a couple of things that the environment, I'm sorry, the EDC testified about. And one of the things I want to say that I'm shocked that is not a part of this, I've owned my own business in New York for about 37 years. I have an apartment in Park Slope, Brooklyn, I have an office in lower Manhattan. I can't focus, I can't concentrate. There is apparently no evaluation of the loss to New York City, the massive economic loss to the hundreds of thousands of people like me that are losing productivity, people who are being, having to lose days from sickness from these deafening sounds. I think it's enormous. I've played lots of UBT tax over the years, I've played lots of state and city tax. So the other thing I did want to speak to is this mythological thing of the electronic helicopters. So when they did that, and there were some reports, the people who were present at NASA when these were done and these tests were done, and what they revealed was that these helicopters flying at 300 feet produce a sound of the equivalent of someone standing on a street sidewalk next to a highway that's going, with cars going by at 50 miles an hour. There's plans to, from United, others, to turn this into, I'm sorry, I'll just wrap it up, but to turn this into a taxi lane across Brooklyn and lower Manhattan, which is going to make huge swaths of this city unlivable. I heard the gentleman from the helicopter industry talk about 1,500 feet. These things are not flying at 1,500 feet. They're flying at 200 to 500 feet over our apartments, which is creating sounds, if it's electronic, it's also going to be unlivable. And I just want to quickly say, I testified here two years ago, nothing has happened. There was, the state legislature, by large majorities, passed to shut down the heliport. Governor Hochul vetoed that for the false reason that that's the FAA, and it's not true at all. The state had absolute control to shut that down. And it's unfortunate, because this is impacting toddlers, and children, infants, seniors, the disabled, you know, people throughout New York City. It's got to stop, and I appreciate your efforts to do so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Anna Maria Jamolka, and I live in downtown Brooklyn. I'm an actress, and the only reason I say that is because, you know, in this new landscape where everything's been brought home, we have to tape now from home auditions, and needless to say, I have gone from not in the route of the flight path to in the route, and there are helicopters coming, I have to tape, and when you hit that spot where you actually nailed an audition, and a frickin' helicopter comes by and ruins it for you, that's a lot of work. But aside from that, I wanted to bring up something that, aside from the noise pollution, is the sky, the skyline pollution. I have actually muted myself and just looked at all the helicopters. At one point, I was down in the Brooklyn Bridge Park, which used to be my respite and my solace and my pause, because we, as a city, are in relationship with everybody, especially in such a tight, congested area. What happens when we are piled up, everyone here has been, I'm imagining, in a relationship, things get heated, you're in each other's faces, pause, space, a breath, a moment away. The parks, the Botanic Gardens, that's what that is for the city. You know, it helps us come back to a more clear, a more sane way to deal with the situation. But unfortunately, sanity is not thought of as profit, or, you know, tax deductible, or, you know, but it is crucial. And I feel like that is not being, when did that stop becoming a value, especially in a city? Our city... Our sanity is everything, especially right now with what's going on in the world. We need these places to go and recalibrate and come back and deal with something in a sane manner, and that's been taken away by these helicopters. So, thank you.
My name is Christine Colster. I work and live in Gramercy, along with my husband and our eight-year-old daughter. Over the last four years, helicopter noise across Manhattan has increased at an alarming rate. Prior to 2021, I felt surprised every time one passed overhead and assumed there was a criminal or news story nearby. A rare occurrence, I heard far less than one per day. So far this month, I've heard at least 10 per day, or 150 in total, for the month. Last week, my daughter and I visited Central Park for a picnic lunch. In the short time we sat in the grass, two different helicopters slowly passed overhead 30 minutes apart. Yesterday, I took a ride on the Hudson River Bike Path, during which I heard at least two. As I sit here writing this, I hear one through my open window. As early as 7:00 AM, helicopters crisscross over our apartment. Each time, my shoulders tense up, my blood pressure goes up, I scramble to play music to drown out the sound. The rest of the day is an uphill battle to combat stress. My family should not have to suffer through this so someone else can gawk down on the city like an exhibition or charter a helicopter for a visit to their vacation home. There are many emergency or unavoidable noises that New Yorkers endure, including ambulance, police, and fire sirens, jackhammering, and the never-ending sound of building construction. On top of that, a symphony of car horns. And yet, we're also expected to tolerate non-essential and recreational helicopters overhead. Today, I asked my eight-year-old daughter if she thought the onslaught of helicopters was normal. She said, "Of course it's not normal, Mom, they're so loud." Yet, here I am, forced to argue against what is obvious to an eight-year-old and an obvious breach to every New Yorker's quality of life. Pulled directly from NYC.gov on a page simply entitled "Noise." "Noise in the community, even at levels that are too low to cause hearing loss, can affect mental and physical health. Long-term exposure to this type of noise can lead to stress, higher blood pressure, muscle tension, fatigue, and sleep problems. Those side effects are demonstrable, and in the long term, lead to further health consequences, including an increased risk of heart attack and stroke. I urge everyone who has a say in this matter to think about the health of families like mine who live directly in the crosshairs of persistent, rackety, non-essential helicopter flights and put a stop to them."
Thank you. I appreciate all of you for your testimony.
Thank you.
And I'd like to call up Michael Popper, David Fitzgerald, John Young, and Jason Eric. No? Okay, I'll give it one more round. Michael Popper, David Fitzgerald, John Young, Jason Eric, and if not, Munira Kegida can come up. Charles Komonoff? Komonoff? John Ost. James Boyd. Yes, you can begin when you're ready.
Okay. My name is Jason Eric, and I'm not affiliated with a particular organization, though I appreciate their advocacy that I've seen here, as well as the council's leadership on this issue. I'm simply a resident of downtown Brooklyn who has seen the incredible development of the Brooklyn waterfront over the last 15 years. So, it's a mystery to me that the city would allow this triumph urban planning to be marred with near constant noise pollution. It is also a mystery to me that the EDC and mayoral administration is so transparently obstructionist to reform. The DEP representative's assertion that noise monitoring technology does not exist can be disproven with a one-minute Google search, and I can send along other vendors that supply this technology if the council would like. I guess their attitude can be summed up as New Yorkers can and will put up with it. They do every day, so why shouldn't they put up with this? But the simple matter, the fact of the matter is, we shouldn't have to. What is happening is not right, and it's not fair, and New Yorkers will notice where their politicians stand on this issue. Thanks again for the council's leadership.
Good afternoon. My name is Munira Kegida. I live in Borum Hill, which is about 10-minute walk from the water's edge, and I am here today just as a resident who's extremely nervous all day because of this sound, but also I wanted to speak on behalf of the people of the Whitecough and Gowanus Housing Projects, NYSHA. I live in the shadows of these two projects, I live across the street. And let me say that we're a 10-minute walk from the water's edge, so you can imagine how quickly a helicopter reaches overhead. They fly very low over the water's edge, over the water, and by the time they get to these projects, they are not very high. They fly so extremely low, it's just above people's heads. And I have clocked it sometime, they start at 7:40 every day, the particular company that's flying over our area, 7:40 every day. On a good day, I've clocked it at every 20 minutes. Every 20 minutes, a helicopter is either going to Manhattan or coming from Manhattan, every 20 minutes until about 8:00 PM. Last night, it was, the last one came in at 9:40. Now, if you restrict the hours of flying, all I anticipate is going to happen, we'll have them coming every 10 minutes, right? It is so unfair. Let me say something else. Noise, of course, is a huge problem, but also our health. A child in our building was found to have high blood, lead, high lead blood content. The pediatrician said it's pretty normal for city kids, but we had a child, two doors down, die of a brain cancer recently, which I hear is on the uptick also, brain cancer, probably coming from the lead content. This was a five-year-old child. So, $1 million is spent on gasoline, I heard, from the heliports? Well, that, that, that million dollars is being dumped on our heads, and we're getting cancer from it. Okay, it's a little hard to say. Thanks.
You guys, you folks might have to shift a little. There you go.
Good afternoon. My name is John Ost, and I see noise rates high on the number of complaints to the city's 311 complaint line. I have served on the board of directors of South Bridge Towers, a 1,600-unit housing cooperative with almost 5,000 residents, located in the South Street Seaport area. Diagonally across from us is Smith Houses, a 1,900-unit NYSHA housing complex with almost 6,000 residents. As you can imagine, noise is high on our priority list, especially sirens, whoop-horns, and helicopters. Many of us survived the 9/11 World Trade Center bombing when helicopters flew overhead constantly. So, helicopters present a very stressful reminder of the past. I avoid going to the Seaport, and over on the west side of Manhattan, I also avoid, as the noise is just too disruptive. As I was preparing for this hearing on April 9th at 9:20 AM, an NYPD helicopter flying over the Brooklyn Bridge near South Street Seaport, and since I live on the 27th floor, I noticed that the helicopter was at eye level, way too low for those walking in the street. And NYPD helicopters burn fuel at the rate of $460 per hour, as well as discharge air pollution. NYPD aircraft regularly fly and hover over both of our developments, both Smith and South Bridge. In addition to the very unpleasantness helicopter brings us, we also have the emergency vehicle horns, so we're constantly being disturbed in Lower Manhattan. I and my residents in South Bridge Towers greatly appreciate the council taking these particular legislative moves. Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Fitzgerald, and I represent the Fitzgerald family in Marine Park, Brooklyn. First of all, I'd like to say, I actually love helicopters personally. I really, really do. I am an aviation enthusiast. I build and fly model planes, I fly drones, I've flown private aircraft. I absolutely love them. But I also know the noise that they make, right? And the helicopter is one of the noisiest flying machines ever invented. Not very efficient and very noisy. So, I'm just going to tell you how the machines that I actually love to watch from a distance, as long as it's not too noisy, affect me. Noise has never bothered me that much before, but I'm more than 60 years old, and noises seem to bother me a little bit more lately. I don't know why, but especially those helicopter noises. So, my real complaints and what driving the noise complaints for me and where I live is the altitude, right? Helicopters are flying over my house at, because I'm an aviation enthusiast, I track ADS-B data, which is the transponder the helicopters use, which will display their flight data, where they're going, how high they are, regularly between 120 and 350 feet above my house. I see them take off on Manhattan, climb to 900 feet, and then slowly descend as they cross Brooklyn. Unfortunately, I live about half a block from Flatbush Avenue, and that's the route they use to go from Manhattan to Kennedy Airport. I wanted to call out one or two things that some of the earlier folks said. The helicopter industry representatives, I was hoping I could get to go earlier because I wanted to look them in the face when I said this. The lady mentioned about IFR helicopter flights. For those of you, if you don't know, is flight in limited or zero visibility. Right now, that's the only respite we get is when there are IFR conditions. If they allow IFR flight in IFR conditions, we'll have double the helicopter traffic that we currently have here in New York City. I just want to finish by telling you that people who I've personally contacted to deal with this condition, 311, multiple times, me and my neighbors, Hakeem Jeffries, my congressman, wasted time. The FAA in Farmingdale, no answer. Will call you back. Never called me back. FAA in Washington DC, wasted my time. Uber Air, Blade Mobility, and the others responsible for all that commuter helicopters. And they are the ones directly responsible for the increase in helicopter traffic. It's the mobility, air mobility apps that are originating at downtown heliport and on the West 30th Street heliport. They're the number-one driver of the increase in helicopter traffic, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you for your work, by the way. I appreciate it 100%.
Is it on now? Yeah. Thank you for your stamina, by the way, and also your public stamina. I'm sorry to see that some of your panel has left, and I'm sorry to see that the industry shills and the EDC have left because they're unbelievable. I live in Chelsea. I commute every day by bike up to Hell's Kitchen, past the heliport, in the park, the egregiously-named Very Important Persons heliport, from which the Trust makes revenue, which they consider necessary, which is really pimping our health and safety. But I don't want to repeat all the complaints that everybody's made because I agree with it completely. I'm alarmed at the endorsement and the enthusiasm about electric helicopters because electric transportation, I'm sorry, is not going to be an answer to climate change. We're two miles out from an environmental train wreck. And electric, public transportation, absolutely, but private transportation and especially helicopters, which are used exclusively by wealth, whether they're corporate business or private, the problem with electric vehicles is that the production and the materials are carbon-intensive, they depend on being charged from fossil-fuel plants. More terrifying are the environmental and human rights issues involved with the extremely toxic mining of battery raw material. Most of us are not aware that cobalt and lithium mining are becoming a neocolonial nightmare for poor populations, reenacting the pillage of oil extraction and involving child slavery, deadly wage slavery, and devastating pollution. Let's not waste our labor, our health, and our innovation and our children's lives on the deadly privileges wealth demands. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, folks, so much for your testimony. This panel is dismissed. I'd now like to call up Philip Turner, John Wilkins, Sydney Garcia-Widgren, and Christopher Widgren. You can begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Pam, council members, Gail Brewer was my council member for a long time, now Sheldon Abreu is, and I'm glad to have them both. I know how long Gail's worked on this issue. Helicopters fly over my Upper West Side neighborhood near Riverside Park, day and night. This morning, I got up earlier than usual, it was 6:25, there was already a helicopter flying near me. It just mars our quality of life so much. I ride my bike along the Cherry Walk, along the Hudson River. Recently, one ride, I counted six flights in 15 minutes. Low-flying, they were terrible.
Can you stop the clock for a second? Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I don't even know if I need my full two minutes because I've heard so many eloquent people speak this morning. I was disturbed by the minimizing of this problem by the industry officials and the ill-preparedness of the members of the administration, which really disappointed me. So, thank you for everything you're doing. I don't need my full two minutes because we all know the truth.
A true hero. Thank you so much.
Hi, excuse me, sorry, my allergies. I'm John Wilkins. I live with my family in Park Slope, Brooklyn.
Is the mic on? You see the red light?
Am I too close? Is it on?
Click the button. There you go. No?
It was right there.
Yeah. Maybe just pull it close.
Okay, sorry. I'll be brief. I'm John Wilkins. I live in Park Slope, Brooklyn, with my family, and I just want to thank the council for all the hard work you're doing. It wasn't until today that I realized that the EDC actually worked for the helicopter industry. I thought they were working for us. Their $28 million estimate of the economic benefit of helicopters is frankly bizarre, and I hope to God whoever did that math isn't doing my taxes because I would have made $100 million this year. I live with my boy and my wife in Park Slope, and I'll just relay one anecdote. This Sunday, it was a nice day, all he wanted to do was sit on the stoop and read a book. He grabbed Pete the Cat, his favorite book, sat on the stoop. Before we were able to read one little Pete the Cat story, there was eight helicopters flying over, as others have said, extremely low altitude, deafening not just my family, but hundreds of families in each direction for dozens of miles all the way to the Hamptons, where we live on the main drag between Manhattan and the Hamptons. So, eight flights in 15 minutes isn't unusual. It was unusual for April, it's commonplace for July afternoons, Friday evenings and Saturday and Sunday evenings are essentially making our neighborhood uninhabitable. The economic benefit of the 28 million fails to include the significant cost of the health damage that the helicopters are doing, the damage to real estate. Now, my neighbors and I are, we're all fed up, we're thinking of moving, we, no one wants to move, we want to raise our families in what was, a short time ago, a beautiful, fantastic, vibrant neighborhood that is becoming uninhabitable because of the noise. So, thank you for all you're doing, and hopefully we can do something to ban these flights and to turn things back to what they were.
My name is Christopher Widgren. I live in Park Slope Prospect Heights, about halfway between the Barclay Center and Grand Army Plaza, right on Flatbush Avenue. I thank you guys for hanging out with us so late today, yeah. I work as a registered nurse down at NYU Brooklyn Hospital. I was the nurse in charge of the largest COVID unit in Brooklyn, down at NYU Brooklyn and Sunset Park. Everybody came out at sunset and banging their pots and pans together, and it was very sweet, but now I'm asking for quiet because the situation is just killing me lately. I don't want to be here, I don't want to be hanging out at a city council meeting all day. You know, I've never sent a dish back at a restaurant or written an angry letter to a business. I'm pretty cool with noise, too. Sirens, fine. Police helicopters. Police helicopters, traffic helicopters, fine. Horns, you know, we live in New York. This is okay. This is a whole other animal, man. I bought a little decibelometer. It costs $20, very easy to measure. Don't know why they were saying it wasn't. Every 20 minutes, going up to 100 decibels, 90 decibels inside the apartment, that's like turning on a hair dryer or a blender every 20 minutes, starting at 6:00 in the morning on Sundays sometimes. I'm just trying to get some sleep. It's completely outrageous, and I don't know what to do. You know, we used to enjoy going on the roof. We can't go on the roof anymore because we can't hear each other. I'm happy now when it's a rainy, cloudy, stormy day because we get a little bit of a break from the helicopters. How sad is that? You know, I just, I don't know what changed. I've lived there for 10 years. It didn't used to be that bad. Couple of years ago, it started getting bad, and then just the last six months, year, and now it's just horrible. I don't know what all has changed, but I hope that we can do something to just help out the people who have our feet on the ground and are ordinary workers and not the wealthy people who are getting out to the Hamptons and JFK.
Hello, my name is Sidney Woodgren. I live in the same place, just north of Prospect Park, half a block off Flatbush Avenue, and I can attest also to the fact that helicopters are flying very low over our building constantly, almost every day, almost every 20 minutes, from 7:00 AM until late into the evening. We live on the first floor. The sound reverberates off of the buildings around us directly into our apartment, and it's, you know, deafening indoors and outdoors. So thank you for holding this hearing and for this opportunity to talk about my experience, which has been unfortunately quite horrible with the commuter helicopters in particular.
Thank you all for your testimony, and I'll be sure to relay to DEP again that they can monitor.
Yeah, what a silly. I don't know.
Feel free to give any feedback on my bill, Intro 27, on the decibel meters as well.
Yeah.
I'd now like to call up Judy Mann, Peter Maloney, Stan O'Connor, and Alan Winston, maybe? Whenever you're ready.
Hi, I'm Judy Mann. I'm a volunteer tour guide on Governor's Island, and I have the privilege of working with tourists that come to the island from all parts of the country, all five boroughs, and all over the world. I was going to tell you a lot about the island and how wonderful it is. You know all that, and there's really nothing much to say, except there's just two things. There's a real difference on Sundays on Governor's Island, when there aren't tourist helicopters taking off from Lower Manhattan. I mean, it's radical. I used to work always on Saturdays. I've stopped working on Saturdays. It is intolerable because of the unending, unremitting war zone that we live in. But Sundays are different. You can actually have a conversation with people, and you can hear the birds. It will make a difference if you can eliminate the tourist helicopters. And I'll just conclude with something that one of the international tourists said to me, which was, "How can you possibly bear it here?" You know, it's just the last thing you want people to think about, an island that the city is investing an enormous amount in to make it into just this extraordinarily luscious place. So thank you so much for the work and for your endurance, and you do a great job. Thank you very much.
I'm a tour guide, too.
Oh, nice to meet you. You probably have a license. I'm just an island tour guide.
Oh, yeah. Hello, Majority Leader. My name is Stan O'Connor. I'm a licensed tour guide. We 10,000 guides, there are almost 10,000 licensed guides, lose money every time four passengers paying $250 each take off for a 30-minute flight. I would be happy to give a half-day tour for $250, but those people go up in the air. We guides provide real walking tours in which we take people to museums. Here's my AMNH membership card. Restaurants, bars, stores, our customers spend money in the city. Tourcopter customers spend money on a 30-minute view that creates noise over the heads of millions. When the helicopter operators cry about a coming loss of jobs to 175 workers, please remember that they are endangering the livelihoods of 10,000 tour guides, and we were here first. Economic development should support and promote real tours with real guides because we want tourism income to be distributed throughout the city. There's a YouTube video that documents Fort Tryon Park overflights at one every two minutes. The official earlier mentioned that the FAA rules supersede any possible city rules. Copters at the downtown heliport are refueled in a manner that's against FAA rules, and apparently nobody checks. Normally, aircraft engines are to be shut off while refueling, just as you shut off your car at the gas station. Hot refueling with the engine running is against the rules. The FAA says to avoid hot refueling, except when, quote, "operationally necessary," such as in a medevac situation in which many emergency flights are needed. At Pier 6, they do it all the time. I have photos. Hot refueling saves time, which increases the number of flights. This is a tourist flight assembly line that could turn into a fireball. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you for taking this and giving this opportunity. We've heard a lot of testimony. I have to agree with even my colleagues right here because I'm not going to Governor's Island again. I was, the last time I was there.
Can you just state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got, yeah. Peter Maloney, I'm a resident of Flatbush. My colleague, Mark Young, from South Midwood Residents Association, also spoke. So I am here just to sort of follow on a lot of what everybody's been saying, but one thing, though, it's been a lot of focus on commuter, on tourist helicopters, at least for the outer boroughs. The issue is commuter helicopters, and we can track it. You've heard there's tracking apps. We can track it, and you can see their Uber and their Blade helicopters, and they're flying over at the height of the tourist season. They're going to JFK. There could be 30 in a day, and they're flying so low, as you've heard before. You make a complaint, you get back a form letter from the FAA, the FAA gives you their guidelines, anyone can look them up. They're violating at least two of the most important guidelines, their height and their being able to veer off in case there's an emergency. They're flying right over Flatbush Avenue. It's the same path, I've noticed for years, the police fly. The police need to fly it, and you do that because it's line of sight. You can see Flatbush Avenue all the way down to the Rockaways. They fly because it's easy. Now, if they get the technology allows them to fly without visual line of sight, what's that going to do? Anyway, it's, I think you really have to consider this is also very much an environmental justice issue. There is an undercount. I guarantee you, there's an undercount in the number of complaints. I get tired of making the complaints. I have to stop working. I'm working inside, and I can't make a phone call from inside my house. I have to stop the phone call. So how many complaints are you going to make in a day? It takes about five or 10 minutes to make, to fill out everything on the complaint. So it's undercounted, especially in the outer boroughs, where a lot of people aren't going to have, you know, the means to make complaints, so.
Thank you.
And they need to follow their altitude restrictions, and they're not following them.
Absolutely. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification for you, our bills that are being heard today do cover both all non-essentials, so it's both the commuter and the.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and I think that resolution's the only one that's going to help somebody in the outer boroughs, because otherwise, and you have to get at the EDC, that's the hard part.
Yeah.
It's like, how do you, you know?
We're working on it.
But there's more money coming in from other sources.
For sure. Thank you so much again, folks, for your testimony. Seeing no one else signed up, if you have not, if you're here to testify in person and have not been called, please go to the sergeant desk and fill out a form. We will now move to our online testimony. I'd like to call on Arlene Lilian Bronzart, Brinzat, followed by Deborah Capadula, Doreen Thai, Mark Diller, Michael McReedy, and Sam Pesson.
You may begin.
Arlene, you can begin when you are ready and unmute yourself.
Oh, okay. I just lost it. I lost it. I'm so sorry. I clicked it. Oh.
We can hear you. You can begin.
Can you hear me? All right. Arlene.
We've lost Arlene. Okay, we're going to move to Deborah Lapidula or Capadula?
Hello, good. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Deborah Lapidula, and I thank you for all that you do, especially Gail Brewer. I'm calling from Queens. I think there was only one other person from Queens, Astoria, but I'm calling from Howard Beach, Lindenwood, which we are the backyard of JFK. It is a true nightmare here of Blade, the non-essential helicopters. We have high-rise condos, co-ops in this area. We have a high population of birds also, and they start at 7:01 AM, flying extremely low. It doesn't matter what the weather is like, even the day that the earthquake took place, they were flying before, during the earthquake, and after. And this is a true quality of life for many here, health-wise, but no one is also addressing structural damages on buildings and homes. We have homes here in the area that are under local law construction, and with these helicopters flying at the same time, this here could possibly cause a disaster in this neighborhood. I don't understand why, for all these years, I have been trying to have ears listen to me since 2016, calling on differing congressmen. My city councilwoman from my district has no interest in this whatsoever. She will not participate. She told me this is a business, and we just have to accept it. Maybe we're earplugs, and that's unacceptable. It also is affecting veterans who suffer from PTSD. They feel like they're back at war. This is unfair of the torture that we're bearing for selfish people who want to zip across the skies for seven minutes of their flight for $200, and we have to bear, each and every day, you go to house of worship and a funeral, a wedding, just a regular Sunday service.
The time has expired. Thank you.
So I'm hoping that this can see soon and change their paths.
Thank you so much for testifying today. I'm waiting patiently, virtually.
And one last thing can I add is maybe a sound can be done. There is numerous 3-1-1 complaints made for 11414. You can look them up, and we need someone to survey this area and have a sound monitor. It is unbearable, unbearable. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you so much. I'd now like to call on Doreen Thai.
Good morning, good afternoon, your time. I am on the other coast, and I live in a small rural farm community. Sorry, my name's Doreen Thai. I live in a small rural farm community where flight school moved in and became one of the largest helicopter training schools in the Pacific Northwest. Our rural lifestyle, livestock, and health is being crushed by flight schools and helicopter training exceeding 85 decibels up to 16 hours a day. It appears FAA's Part 91 describes 200 to 500 flight hours required to become a helicopter tour pilot, with the extra hours required per type. When I see upwards of 20 helicopters over your community at a time, I wonder who suffered those 4,000 to 10,000 hours of insufferable training over our homes, health, and lives, only to come torture your communities indefinitely. Flight school can cost more than a doctorate degree. For the past decade, ALPA, the largest pilot union in the world, continues saying that there is no pilot shortage, including February 5th article titled "2023 Shatters Another Record for U.S. Pilot Production." It would appear the pilot shortage narrative is simply an aviation lobby talking point making a greedy few unprecedented profit while indenturing students and graduates by equipping them for a flooded pilot market, driving down wages, while creating evermore communities enduring hellish pilot training, touring, and an aviation lobby which continues finding evermore ways to utilize these certificates, like flying by the dozens over New York or national parks or mass distributing biocides, wild horse roundups, wildlife pulling, et cetera. Thank you for acknowledging that aviation noise and pollution drive down education while driving up violence, hypertension, and heart attacks, true physical and mental suffering and torture. It seems unconscionable and unconstitutional for the FAA to continue delays while sacrificing wildlife, nature, ecosystems, and human health for glut of non-essential aircraft. Bravo for these bills standing against this. Regarding eVTOL, advanced air mobility, I've been asking how much wildlife and bird removal pulling will have to happen for them to remain safe, and will this change trespassing laws? I don't even receive acknowledgement of the questions. Can the funds generated by helicopter violations move from general fund into a fund designated specifically for combating aerial problem? Finally, I applaud New York for providing these bills.
Time has expired. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for acknowledging that the amount of people suffering from Sea to Shining Sea for helicopter and aviation excesses, including helicopter tours, will no longer be tolerated. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd now like to call Arlene Lilian Bronzart. I know we lost you when you were just beginning.
Thank you. Yes?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay. Arlene Bronzat, Professor Emeritus of the City University of New York and member of the Board of Grow NYC. I am a researcher writer on the effects of noise on people's mental and physical health. My first two studies, which are considered the landmark studies in the field, were done to explore the impact of elevator train noise on children's learning when their school was adjacent to the train track. And when I compared the reading scores of children adjacent to the train track to the children on the quiet side of the building, they were nearly a year behind in reading, and that is by sixth grade. That is considerable. Fortunately, the Transit Authority chose the site of the school to test out a program on abating noise on the tracks by installing rubber resilient pads, and the Board of Ed put acoustical ceilings in the classroom. I was then asked by a public official to go back to the school and see if this made a difference. Well, it certainly did. When I compared the reading scores of children next to the elevator train track, and it was all quieter, with children on the quiet side of the building, they were both reading at the same level. The FAA has used these two studies, plus studies confirming these results that followed, and they have spent nearly $400 million to quiet schools adjacent to their aircraft. I've also done two studies in New York City on the effects of aircraft noise on people's health and well-being, and should you be interested, I can give you their citations. I heard that at the introduction that you were interested in exploring the impact of noise on people in parks, because I also do write about the importance of quiet in people's lives, and I can assist you in that. And presently, I'm working.
The time has expired. Thank you.
I'm working at Columbia on a noise study. Thank you.
Thank you so much for testifying today, and I would love to read anything you'd send over, even though we.
Okay.
We're looking right now and found something.
You like to read? Okay.
Thank you.
It's readable. It's readable.
Great.
Thank you.
I look forward to it. I'd now like to call on Mark Diller.
Good afternoon. Thank you for hanging in so long. Quick shout-out to staff counsel as well as the chair for hanging in with us. Thank you. I'm a member of one community board, and I work at another one. I'm a member of the Civic Engagement Commission, and I'm testifying on behalf of none of those folks. This is just me. You've heard so much about the details and the science and so forth that I won't burden you with a repetition. So I'll just share one experience, which was Shakespeare in the Park, in Central Park last summer. Right as Hamlet was giving his soliloquy, which we can all quote, right? A really dramatic moment of theater, surrounded by all kinds of folks who were tourists themselves, were interrupted by a helicopter literally hovering overhead so that, I assume, one or a small handful of tourists could take a photo. The, so the unnecessary helicopter traffic.